For the seven o'clock meeting?
No.
Uh, Nancy plans to be here. She may be a little late, something about work. Kaplan and Prasad will not be here.
What people?
What in?
Uh, Casey's sick, yes.
Casey's sick?
Yes.
Where's the, where's the rest of the gang?
Two or maybes.
Two or maybes?
One, one's a maybe. So.
We have five.
We have five.
Well, barely enough for a, uh...
Do you want to go?
Another... Okay, uh, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay. Announcement is made that adequate notice in this meeting has been given and that is being conducted in accordance with ten J S A ten colon four dash six at sector of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Uh, Nora, please call the roll.
Berkowitz.
Here.
Droskowitz.
Here.
Ready.
Present.
Willens.
Here.
Arakane.
Present.
We also have with us our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Chadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Okay, let's start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this point in this evening's meeting, is there any member of the public that has anything to be brought to this board that is not on this evening's agenda? I hear you can see none. Uh, right, we're gonna call case, application twenty colon fifty-four, Danny Reilly.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Turtlehead from the law firm, Turtlehead Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant in this matter. And just to bring everybody here back on June fourth, we approved most of the testimony that was an issue still outstanding, which we had asked us to address, which is the use, which I'm prepared to do tonight. Also, since the last hearing, we've submitted a traffic control drawing to the child with raised questions, which we have our traffic engineer, Nicholas Berderesi, here this evening to speak to those questions, if there's any questions without the exhibit itself. But to remind the board, what we're looking to do is take the property, which is at the corner of New Road and Route forty-six, and redevelop the building of the site with, take that building down, construct a new building, which would house, and I'm here to prepare to say tonight, a Dunkin' Donuts operating. We had kind of danced around it the last meeting because there were still some issues to iron out, but I'm here tonight to say, we'll commit to a Dunkin' Donuts. If there's a change in use at some point in the future, we'll come back before this board, board so chooses, we'll commit to you tonight to a Dunkin' Donuts. Which helps us to get the testimony, it helps you understand a little more the application as well, because the testimony has been associated with Dunkin' Donuts, that the, that the number of, uh, cars, the number of cars typically in the queue based upon past experiences and data would be between eight and nine cars. This queue has thirteen cars, it can do it normally, it's only one many more, we have too many for us to speak through the process. So clearly, we have overcapacity with respect to the drive-through and the ability to handle the number of cars that are coming to the site. That being said, since the last meeting, we did provide to a traffic, traffic control exhibit, which shows some of the things we discussed at the last meeting. One was adding a do not block the box area at the entrance on New Road. The other was the striping that we put in on the pavement. You can work with the engineer if they want it to be more visible, whatever the case may be. But to help aid the traffic understanding, the move around, we have added those there that we take to help and address some of the things we discussed at the, at the last meeting. So I do have Nicholas Berderesi here tonight. We are committed to doing the Dunkin' Donuts with respect to the questions that were raised by Mr. Chadwick in terms of the drivers being able to understand what they're gonna be doing. We think that the site markings that we're gonna be putting on the pavement level, we will sign there, will help the traffic movers of the site. Uh, we, if you can answer any questions or to bring us something to where we stand.
Uh, Counselors, before we start, um, at the last meeting, you were gonna limit it to a donut-type facility, not a burger, not a chicken, that's still...
That commitment is here tonight can be a condition of approval, uh, if my client is willing to commit.
Yes, thank you.
For the record, uh, Ms. Snyder is here. You may proceed.
Let me ask you, was it the remainder of the building, they're taking what, four hundred square feet or a little less?
The entire building will be for the coffee shop used with Dunkin' Donuts.
That's not what's in on the plan.
They will be for the entire Dunkin' Donuts.
Does that mean the...
The plan showed three hundred and change, almost four hundred square...
I'm sorry, the retail component. There'll be, there'll be some snacks that will be not Dunkin' Donuts products, but there will be some shelving for some additional items that are there. If you'd like some testimony, I can bring Mr. Taylor to that.
Just Dunkin' Donuts is gonna pair up with some kind of a convenience outlet, or...
Yeah, if I can, I'll, let me call Mr....
Are you, were you sworn last?
I was. John Taylor is the driving engineer.
And you still understand you're in the road?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Uh, just to clarify, that's a breakdown of the patron area, which backs into the parking calculation. The entire building is Dunkin' Donuts and only Dunkin' Donuts. There's no convenience store component at all. It's all Dunkin' Donuts.
So do you still need a kitchen area?
Um, there is, it's kitchen, that's the back of the house, but there's three hundred fifteen back into the parking calculation for your ordinance, that's the only reason we broke it out.
There's no seats in the thousand square foot left of it?
Correct. No seats.
So what do they do?
It's just, it's a seating area where you walk in, align to what are your...
There you go.
What don't get it. That's all. It's only three hundred, it's fairly small.
I'm not making myself clear. On the plan, you've got three hundred and eighty-eight square feet, which is the Dunkin' Donuts place, right?
The whole building is Dunkin' Donuts.
Then you have labeled retail, approximately a thousand square feet, right?
The plan, the building itself is one thousand four hundred and seventy-five square feet.
Right.
Entire building. There's a small area in the front, which is a patron area, which is the three hundred and eighteen square feet.
Okay.
The whole building, the eleven hundred square foot with the, the bathrooms, the kitchen area, uh, the counters where the waitstaff is, it's a, it's a fourteen hundred square foot Dunkin' Donuts, with no seats.
With no seats. You have no problem bringing that up? I, I think just...
The only reason we make that is because the way the ordinance reads for parking.
Are they making the donuts there?
No, this is too small for the donuts.
Well, this, this shows the kitchen area, I just wanted, what are they gonna make it, what are they gonna make in the kitchen?
Don't they make us sandwiches?
They make sandwiches.
I thought they just throw them, I thought they just pop them in a microwave that's on the counter.
That's probably what it is. Coffee machines and all that.
Still to clean it.
Big apartment sink and all that.
Mr. Chairman, I, um, now that it's been dedicated to Dunkin' Donuts, I feel much more comfortable with what they're showing on the plans as far as the queue and the do not block the box. I would like the traffic engineer, we did discuss if it was gonna be a Starbucks or something, uh, we did discuss over the phone, in that situation, we might be thinking about closing off the New Road driveway completely and make people just go in off Route forty-six, just an exit onto New Road. And with the Dunkin' Donuts coming in, I feel very comfortable that their, their queues are much smaller from my experience.
Yeah, but that doesn't stop from being a Starbucks at some point though, does it?
Well, that's what we have to...
We, we will make that a condition of approval. Uh, it'd be limited to a Dunkin' at this point in time, or if, uh, if you wanna exclude a Starbucks as being a, we're happy to do that. But right now, the, the plan is for Dunkin' Donuts to be in this site.
Okay.
We understand the board's concerns, and that's why we're trying to narrow, narrow the, the issue, we're asking for, the least we can do in return is try to make it as narrow of a scope of, of a use as we can.
Okay. Okay.
So I'm, I'm unclear about this. So, so what you're proposing is that all entrance comes from forty-six and just the Exodus comes...
No, 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 no.
That was something we discussed, it was going to be something like a Starbucks and we had to worry about the queue.
Okay, got it. But if it's Dunkin' Donuts, anything goes.
Because they're designated a Dunkin' Donuts.
Got it, alright.
Good complaints? You can proceed with your witnesses.
Okay, then with the previous testimony.
Good evening. I'm just gonna explain a little bit about some of the, uh, the striping and signing modifications that we proposed. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna use the regular exhibit and kind of walk you through what, what we added from the last meeting from some of the discussions. So there's off of forty-six, what we were trying to do, we're changing this arrow to be a right turn arrow, kind of guiding the people for the drive-through, so it says drive-through with a right turn arrow. We wanna guide them around the canopy so they're pointing straight into the drive-through as opposed to having them come essentially directly and have to make the left across the people entering. So we felt that that was a nice longer area, it doesn't impact the, the parking and the, the activity at the canopy. Additionally, we added, uh, some identification signs for the drive-through, one on each side, as well as some signage that is supplemented by a do not block the box area in the entrance. What that's gonna help alleviate is when someone comes off of forty-six, if for some reason, you know, this was the Cadillac of Dunkin' Donuts and everyone wanted to come here, the Mecca of Dunkin' Donuts, and there was an extra car stack that came from the north side, we didn't want them sitting in the driveway's throat. So by putting that do not the block, do not block the box, that'll, uh, help alleviate that with some supplemental signage as well. Again, that was all above and beyond what we had presented at the last meeting.
Any questions on that? Uh, I think we also had a little discussion at the last meeting about the canopy is not being moved at all. Is that correct?
It is being moved, yes.
Okay, there was discussion about moving it down a bit more, is this, is that depicted in this final drawing? Cause I don't see that. Or am I missing that?
I'd have to look at the survey to see, um, maybe John can help me out.
That would alleviate that other problem we were talking about right now, right? Cause right now the canopy, it would be tough to turn right and have a forty-six and make that swing around.
Yeah, it's a, it's actually is pushed down, so there's a, let me get the dimension for you.
Thank you.
There is, um, thirty, it's labeled, uh, that might be the setback, so about thirty-five foot. So the aisle at this corner of the canopy is about thirty-five feet wide, so someone that came in has a really large swing area to come in that direction. So yes, it is pushed down about almost forty feet, actually more than forty feet from the highway. So there's a big area there.
And how tall, how tall is the canopy again?
Uh, I guess thirteen six, I think, usually on the underside, a little more. Uh, but it meets, you know, whatever highway standards for tractor-trailers, if, if one had to drive under the corner of it. It meets all the normal canopy sizes.
I think the Dodge and Fire Department wants that fourteen clear on the...
Yeah, it probably is. I know on the highways, we do a minimum of thirteen six. Some canopies we do fourteen, some fourteen six.
You may get subject to the fire department.
It's fine, whatever, whatever they'd like, we're, we're happy to make the canopy that, that height.
So to clarify for me, the only thing that was a sticking point for me was the ejector that was here that day was concerned that the queue would back off, back onto New Road and impede the exit from their strip mall.
Exit.
So you're, that was with thirteen cars, is that what it was?
So we, we can fit fourteen in here inside, and then if it started to stack out, we'd have say a fifteenth in the aisle, the sixteenth, maybe the rear of it is in the road, seventeen, eighteen, we'd almost feed it about the nineteenth vehicle. And that would be if everyone came from New Road.
Right.
It's gonna split, you know, about fifty-fifty, so some of them are gonna be...
So you smoothed it out, so that, that really, you're saying the average queue is nine?
Normally nine, uh, for Dunkin's.
So can, so to that point, uh, we're back to my original questions in previous sessions around the Dunkin' Donuts in East Hanover that is near the proximity of three twenty-five, uh, Route ten eastbound side. So in this scenario, there's no breakdown lane. In that scenario, there is somewhat of a breakdown lane, I don't even know if it's a designated breakdown lane, but nonetheless, it's a lane where the excess traffic can queue up. And then in addition to that, if I'm not mistaken, the configuration of that Dunkin' Donuts is pretty similar to, I guess, what's proposed here, as you stated, meaning a confined area, no seats, no, no chance to sit and dine. Um, I guess all the walk-in traffic is just gonna be standing traffic getting their coffee and, and getting their stuff and leaving. And so in regards to that queue on Route ten, um, it, it leads into that breakdown lane, and it's more than what you're representing here.
Yeah, so I looked at that, I remember at the meeting you mentioned it, so I went quick on my phone to check it on Google. So that's a single lane, uh, drive-through, so they don't have two order boards. So technically, because there's two drive-through lanes here, there is kind of a breakdown lane, I guess, interior, because if you're in the left lane, you broke down for some reason, the cars can continue using the order board on the right side in this.
I looked at Hanover.
I'm pretty sure it had only about a ten-car stack before it was out on the road, and that was a single order, uh, board. We have about fourteen in here, so to get to the road, you're looking at, you know, sixteen or seventeen to get out there.
Okay, and so to the Dunkin' Donuts that's less than nine hundred feet west of this, are you familiar with like the, the dynamics of the parking and the, the morning drive traffic and the obedience or lack thereof regarding striping and parking and double parking?
I, I don't know the site specifically and how they're parked there, but I know it's, it's just a walk-in facility, so it's a little bit different, well, a lot different than this facility. So you'll have the option to use the drive-through or the, the parking here if needed. So if that one's spilling over and they're getting more than the parking is what I think I'm, I'm hearing from you, um, those people are more like probably, normally we get probably upwards of seventy percent of the customers go through the drive-through, so you're only gonna get about thirty percent here.
So, so that reference to the west, uh, to the one nine hundred feet west of this particular facility is referencing more of the obedience of the intended striping and, and everything else. So what, what is the adherence to, uh, the ratio of adherence among customers when you stripe these types of sites?
Um, we find the vast majority do obey the striping.
What's, what, so what's that?
I, I don't...
Your professional guesstimation.
I can guess over ninety percent that people are, are obeying. Um, but yeah, but if you get, you know, you get that one person that's, you're gonna notice it because, you know, the one person that ignores it.
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions by the board?
There, there's not gonna be any stools or ledges or anything in, you know, relationship to no seats, but there's not gonna be anything like that either.
No, it's just a grab and go.
I have two questions. The traffic coming eastbound on forty-six turns in this driveway. Should we have a sign on forty-six telling them that they turn right?
Uh, no extra signage. Uh, we have the arrow on the pavement that has the right turn arrow.
I'm coming in and I'm looking around the parking lot, am I gonna look down at the pavement?
Yeah, the, the, the truth of the matter is...
I'm gonna come right around that corner.
About ninety percent of their customers are the same people that are coming into their stores. So they all know, hey, I come in, I'm going to the right, you know, there's a ten percent. And if you get ten percent that, of the people that came in, so if you had, you know, twenty-five in the hour and three of them went straight...
We're killing this. Is there a reason you wouldn't wanna put a sign there?
I can add a sign, I, I personally think it's overkill, but we can add a sign if you...
The other, the other, the other thing is the box. Assume you're wrong and that the stacking area is filled. The car's gonna be stopped with his tail sticking out into that lane on New Road or not?
No, no.
Okay.
How do you, how do you figure that? How, how do you figure that it's not gonna be sticking out in that far right lane where the majority of traffic is trying to make or navigate that right-hand turn coming from New Road to forty-six?
Because there's about thirty feet from the drive-through lane to the road.
Okay.
Any other questions by the board?
Are we trying to prevent anybody making a left turn off of New Road into that property?
Um, we, we are adding a sign that's not currently there.
I know there's four or even six lanes there, but...
There are.
Some crazy people out there.
Yeah, there's...
Well, you gotta be real crazy.
Yeah. Um, it's funny, we did traffic counts and no one actually made the turn during peak hours. Interestingly. Uh, maybe a tana-gon at night, uh, you know, I might make that, uh, attempt, but no.
Well, is the, is it turn in, a ninety-degree turn or is it...
Uh, yeah, ninety degrees, yeah, you turn, if you were illegally turning left then...
No, no, I, I, this is a backtrack. So if you're coming off a new road, going north, making a ninety-degree turn into, and then you gotta, and then you gotta turn another ninety-degree...
You do, you do, but if there's... We ran all the templates and it works fine for the, for the nineteen-foot-long vehicle, which covers the larger pickup trucks.
Any other questions? It does not appear as any of the members of the public here, so we'll go to the next witness. Unless Mr. McFone has a question.
I think those would be the only witnesses who we would have been for this evening.
That's it. Uh, okay, uh, for the record, there are no members of the public here, so I will not ask for comments. Motion to go into conference?
So moved.
Second Snyder.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? I would just like to state for the record, we only have six members here, and you're entitled to seven. Now you can hear what the conference says tonight, and you can then ask to carry the case if you don't like what you hear.
That's a very generous offer.
I'll give you that, I'll give you that option.
I will, I will take that option, it's a very generous option, thank you.
We try to be as generous as possible. My generosity is only exceeded by my handsomeness, so.
No comment.
Come here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, who wants to start?
I guess I will. I like it. I think, uh, it's a good spot for it. I think you addressed the main concern of the traffic coming out on New Road. Makes sense to me, so I'm gonna be in favor of it.
Okay, I, I'll go next. Um, I'm not in favor of it. I see this as backing up well into New Road despite the two lanes as opposed to the one as they compared to the East Hanover site. In addition to that, we have a Dunkin' Donuts less than nine hundred feet away on the westbound, uh, excuse me, on the eastbound side of forty-six west of this respective property. And I just, I just see this as intensifying this, this already intensified intersection, and I, I, from a traffic perspective, I don't see this as being safe. And I, and again, I see that long line and I don't, uh, with all due respect to the testimony, I respectfully disagree in regards to the adherence with the striping that will further cause the, the logjam of traffic coming down New Road onto, onto the site. And of course, there's always, um, the concern of those crazy drivers, as Mr. Berkowitz labeled, uh, who are desperate for that, I guess the Dunkin' versus the Wawa, to, um, totally ignore any, um, any signage or, um, you know, traffic, uh, traffic dangers as it relates to pulling into that lot. So I'll be voting against it.
Can I, can I ask Ms. Snyder a question?
Mm-hmm.
So don't you think being that there's another Dunkin' Donuts on this, in this, one of the traffic patterns, that that would decrease the likelihood of there being an issue?
No, you don't think so?
No, I don't, I don't.
Anything practically was gonna happen if this place opens is that one's gonna close, like a business.
Yeah, could be. But in addition to that, no, to your, to your question, no, because I, I, my concern is actually logjamming that already congested intersection. And, you know, we are dealing, uh, like I actually, you know, travel there on multiple, you know, different day parts in, in a day. And it is clogged, it's not necess, it's not a morning versus afternoon drive type of thing. And then, of course, when people return to work, that's a whole different dynamic that we really don't have current research on. Now, you know, the, the experts have provided guidance in regards to what that traffic flow's gonna be, but it, it will clog that area, and we've already approved projects, um, regardless, Starbucks and there are already Dunkin' Donuts out there that, where it does spill over. And, you know, maybe the East Hanover is not the best, um, you know, com, direct comparison, meaning they're one lane and this is two lanes, but you, you build and they will come, and they will come, and they will congest, you know, that, that area. There's a great potential of making that intersection even more congested. Uh, you know, I, I just don't, and with the Dunkin' Donuts just less than nine hundred feet away on the westbound side, and of course, Wawa down New Road, I, I, I see this as a traffic hazard. I'll be voting against it.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Mr. Berkowitz, would you like to go next?
Sure. Generally, I'm very, I don't know if legal is the right word, but, uh, I think people should be able to develop the property the way they want to, uh, so long as it doesn't, is not a detriment to either its neighbors or the town. Here, I just think, I agree with everything that Ms. Snyder said. Uh, I'm gonna be voting against it. Uh, in addition, I was just, I just thought, I just thought in my head with, uh, somebody going south on New Road, making a left turn onto forty-six, is then have to cross a lane to get into the driveway to pull in. I can't imagine that that's not gonna cause problems during a, a busy traffic time. I'm gonna be voting against it.
Mr. Willens?
Obviously, we have concern about the congestion area. What I'm not clear on, haven't, or don't recall, is the current level of traffic visiting this existing business site, okay? Versus what the Dunkin' Donuts would be. So we've had testimony about what the Dunkin' Donuts traffic may look like. Do we have any, uh, testimony as it pertains to the amount of increase in traffic that will be in and out of that site during the rush hour mornings? And I don't, if, if you've said that, I'm sorry, I didn't record it, but that would be a concern because from my standpoint, uh, you've done a good job presenting, uh, your traffic flows and number of cars and whatever, and alleviating the stacking problem by putting two drive-through boards, so I think you've addressed that very nicely. Uh, moving the, the, uh, canopy down addresses another concern I had. Uh, at the same time, I don't think that there's gonna be that much dramatic increase in traffic because you put Dunkin' Donuts in versus what's already there. Uh, and if you have some testimony that could validate that for me, I would be a lot more strongly in favor of this application, but I haven't heard that testimony, so.
So you're a yes or no, or maybe you want more information?
I'm a yes at this point, but, uh, I would like to have a little more information on that if possible, but that's...
Okay. Who am I missing? Are there, uh, ready?
Yeah, uh, applicant made a very good improvements on moving the canopy inside and, uh, making the, uh, wood, wood amount of space coming in, inside, into the, from forty-six, as well as they addressed the traffic flow. And the main concern was the neighbor, they were, uh, they were objecting that they're, uh, from the neighbor in place, they may block their traffic, but the testimony provided today, I'm very happy that there is enough space, like fifteen, sixteen cars behind the, and so, uh, is a very good improvement. So, uh, like a business process, uh, you know, these things, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. I'm just gonna interject some information that I heard, um, just the other day, somebody asked me something and it turns out the property's in Montville. Uh, Wawa's, um, building a major, uh, facility just east of the property on the westbound side, uh, they're taking over the old Supas restaurant, that whole, that whole corner.
Or, who told you they have anyone change their road?
Good, good, bad, or indifferent for this application, I don't know. Uh, you know, first, first of all, I'm sure you're gonna ask carry this, right?
I will.
Alright, so I'm gonna tell you my thought at this point. I am squarely on the fence. I have a lot of reservations, um, but on the other hand, uh, I don't think this particular property will signi, this particular application will significantly, um, add to be a detriment to that intersection. That intersection sucks. I mean, if, and once again, if the state had been smart, they would've taken that property and put a right-hand jug handle, and then everybody would've been happy. That's what, that's what, because that was a closed gas station when, when the, when the thing was improved, that was a closed gas station. the thing was improved, that was a closed gas station. Uh, once again, just like they did up here on Cherry Hill Road, they allowed a piece of property to get away and create havoc for us. I'm clearly on the fence, clearly on the fence. The information that Mr. Willens now presents, that he'd like to see, is interesting, and that may push me towards the, towards the affirmative. So maybe if you wanna come back and, and, um, reiterate that particular part of the, you know, where, where we're at with increased, I think that's very important.
I, I, I would like to have that opportunity. If the board is inclined to reopen the record to be able to answer Mr. Willens's questions, I, I would, I would go after that.
We try to be very accommodating, you know, as much as I possibly can. And I know you hearing this now gives you an idea of what you need to do.
Absolutely.
All right, so, uh, motion to come out of conference? So moved. So you're asking us to carry this case without further notice, and with whatever extensions are required?
Yes, in fact, I'll write a letter, make sure that I can let her out, and give it to the court.
I'm also asking to reopen.
Reop, asking to reopen the case. And our lovely, uh, secretary is now going to, they went to her magical book, put a magic wand on the calendar and come up with a date, right?
How much time do you need?
This year or this year or next year?
Well, can we do another half hour or something?
I was gonna say, another half hour, hopefully will get us through it. Uh, the testimony that I understand we need to provide you is, is the existing and the differential which we'll provide you, and then if there are any other questions that we can, we can resolve, we'll certainly do that at that time.
This is a table support narrative, correct?
Yeah.
So the table will get here sometime before the meeting night, like ten days before.
The table, I believe, is already in the traffic reports that are provided, but we haven't given testimony yet, possibly similar.
That table showing the edit?
Yeah, we, we'll, we'll ha, we'll have it well in advance of the next meeting, but ten days at least before the next meeting, but I believe it's already in the material.
All right. Traffic reports are tough to read.
Yeah.
Sure cure, sure cure for insomnia.
If the board, if the board, if the board would be acceptable to the board, since we have a focus as to what the board has asked for, I would be happy to have that information taken out of the reports and put into a separate document, we will send it more than ten days before.
Great.
So that way you don't have to figure out where it is.
So we can get it emailed to us.
Okay.
So Nora, can we do a half hour before another meeting, by any chance?
Aye.
Oh, not, not unless we can get seven people, I mean, maybe that's, maybe that's shooting ourselves in the foot, let's just go with it.
We have, we're booked with half-hour special meetings from now through October twentieth.
Okay.
Um, maybe, why don't we try, can, we put them on September twenty-ninth, try sticking you on there? A regular meeting, seven-thirty, if you only need half an hour, I don't see why.
Yeah, do seven, do s, do s.
What was the date?
September twenty-ninth.
Nine twenty-nine, that's gonna be the regular meeting.
Very good. We, we, I confirm with my experts, I believe there are two out of, we have Mr. Berkowitz, he's, he's getting all right, he's, he's, he's.
Okay, motion to carry twenty-colon fifty-four Danny Reilly to September twenty-ninth without notice and with, um, uh, acceptable, um, extension. Mr. Willens, second by?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Jaskowitz, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, we'll see you on the twenty-ninth.
Mr. Chairman, and board members, I do appreciate your diligence of all of this coming in early tonight for us, and we're forward seeing you on the twenty-eighth, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, no problem. I guess we can call the next meeting, all right, do I have a motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so we have gone through that, now we go to, you ready to do the next meeting?
Yep, just one second.
Nora, you ready?
Yeah, I'm pretty much ready here.
Announcement is made, the adequate notice of this meeting has been given, that it is being conducted in accordance with NJSA ten-colon four-dash-six-at-second of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Please call the roll, Nora.
Berkowitz?
Here.
Jaskowitz?
Yep.
Ready?
Pledged.
Snyder? Here. Willens?
Here.
Ira Kane?
Present.
We also have our board attorney, Mr. King, our board planner, Mr. Cadwick, and our board engineer, Mr. Holloway.
Present.
All right, we did the pledge of allegiance at the first meeting, so we'll dispense with that. Is there any member of the public that has any business to be brought to this board that is not on, on this evening's agenda? Hear none, see none. Uh, the resolutions can be done by Berkowitz, Jaskowitz, Kaplan, Parek, Ready, and Willens. Mr. Willens, would you like to move, um, twenty-one, twenty-six, twenty-one, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, thirty-nine, oh-three, fifty-three, twenty-six, sixteen, eighteen? Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Second, Ready.
Second by, by Mr. Ready, any discussion? Nora, call the roll on that?
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Kaplan? Ready?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Okay, that was quick. Resolutions are done. We now have. Application twenty-one eleven, Richard Fazel, Fazelari, Fazelari, come on up, come on up at the table.
Who's, are, are both of you going to provide testimony?
I'll take the top.
Could you raise your right hand, sir?
That was quick.
Do you swear a firm testimony you're about to give before board, struts help you got? And for the record, can you state your name?
Richard Fazelari Jr.
And you're the owner of the subject property, twelve profit Fox Run?
Yes.
I thank you, you're sworn, you may sit down.
You're, you're, no, right here, you're, you're a better man than me, 'cause my wife will be right next to me, 'cause she wouldn't let me.
She does recognize you can't talk now, right?
Okay, uh, you wanna construct a pool deck?
Yes.
All right, so, why don't you tell us about, I guess you have a pool, is that correct?
Yeah, we have an above ground.
Above ground.
Uh, that's already in place, um, we just wanna put a deck around it, uh, I think it's a hundred and twenty foot deep, so that we can sit up there and keep an eye on our kids and not be fifty feet away from them on our regular decks we can sit in.
We had one, in the old days when my kids were young, we had the, the deck coming out of the house.
Yeah.
Out of the back of the house, and the pool was right off, it was like having an in-ground pool.
Yeah.
My wife could stand in the kitchen, and it was, it was fantastic, it was a great concept.
We wanted to do that as well, but the sun was in the other corner, so.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of.
All right, so, you're, you're looking for de minimis, um.
It drives, it included the pool, it's an impervious coverage.
That's correct.
Without that, it would be.
I would be, I'm getting to that. First of all, your, your requests are de minimis. You're talking about a little more than one percent on the yards and course open deck, and your impervious coverage you're asking for one point two. The interesting thing is, your pool, we have to classify as impervious coverage. Now, a pool isn't a water collector, it's not impervious coverage, so unfortunately, you're over the, over the thing because of that. Uh, and that's all you're asking for, no side yard, no rear yard, the, your pool's already there?
Yep.
You have no complaints from your neighbors that you're partying too much?
No.
Alcohol at a minimum?
I'll take the second on that one.
Okay. Um, any questions by the board?
None.
Nope.
Okay, any members of the public have any questions of this witness on testimony given? Uh, hear none and see none, there's nothing else you'd like to add, this is quick, isn't it?
Yeah, good.
Uh, are any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application and supportive of this application? I hear none and see none. Someone like to make a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, sir.
I just wanted to point out there was a engineering office letter, and it talks about possible, um, building on easement, and they wanted a letter to confirm that it wasn't on easement. There were three comments made by the division of engineering.
Why don't I have that?
No, why don't we have that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Only you have that?
I don't have the letter.
June twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one, Richard.
No, it's not our topic.
Do you have, do you have that letter?
We, we don't.
I have a copy.
Okay, now, you can't talk unless you get sworn in, so I told you, I, I told you, you, you didn't, you didn't pay attention, okay. So do you understand what the letter says?
Uh, basically, it said, if we have any water problems, we will rectify it.
No, that's not, that's not what he's saying.
It says that you're relatively flat, you have to make sure you're not gonna, uh, you know, with the neighbors, not gonna cause any problems.
Yeah.
But also says that, um, because we're just working off a sketch, and there's shown on, uh, on the plans that the old plans of some easements there, and we don't know where you are relative to the easement.
Yeah.
So we would need confirmation in the letter, um, to the engineering office regarding, um.
Well, they, they would, they would need to agree to take that, take it down if it was in the easement.
They don't, so they don't want you, you can't build on an easement, okay?
Yeah.
So you, you would comply with all the requirements of the town's engineering letter, and you understand that if you do do any construction on that easement, that you'd have to take that down. So benefits you to make sure you know where that easement is and not.
Yeah, they're looking for that and/or an affidavit if there is something to be worked out.
Okay, so you, we're gonna make that part of the resolution, it's just a little additional, okay? Uh, it, this is de minimi, we don't need to have a statement, this is a very de minimis request. So let's frame a resolution so we can move on.
Application twenty-one colon eleven, Richard Fazel, twelve Fox Run, block ninety-eight, lot ten, dark three-zero, zone RDS three to issue or grant C variance to construct a pool deck contrary to section four thirty dash ten, I, and section four thirty dash thirty-five, column thirteen, in compliance, applicant agreed to be in compliance with the engineering report.
You love me.
Second Snyder.
Second Snyder, any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskowitz?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Willens?
Yes.
Ira Kane?
Yes. Result is the variance is granted, now just gonna give you one little caveat, this will be memorialized on our first meeting in August, which is August eleventh. At that point, you'll be able to get your papers, and then you can proceed with your building permits or whatever else you need.
Okay.
Okay, enjoy?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, appreciate it.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Okay, Ca, uh, this is, uh, application twenty-one twenty-one, uh, Patel, twenty-seven, Adelphi Road, this is a continued hearing from June twenty-third, is the applicant here? Please come forward. Now, for the board, I'd ask Mr. Holloway to go through the town memos and kinda give us an overview of what everything is, is being said, okay?
Yeah.
So that we can get a better understanding. You can sit down.
Are you, are you gonna provide testimony?
They're sworn, aren't they?
Okay, you're sworn, you're sworn?
Uh, you're sworn last time.
You were both here last time, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you may sit down.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, basically, we have a memo from the construction official that talks about the construction code definition.
You can sit in those chairs, folks, if you'd like.
Of a third, of a third story versus what a, uh, ordinance might refer to as a third story. Um, in some of my towns, the third story, if there's stairs that lead to, permanent stairs that lead to the top floor, and if it's habitable, um, that can be considered by ordinance to be a third story. If there was something where it was a storage area and it had a, not non-permanent stair to it, that would certainly be called a, um, an attic in that, in that situation. So basically, what the construction code official is saying, that based on the construction code, this habitable attic is of sufficient earth, small enough in size, that it would be technically a habitable attic, but it would not be a third story. So there is a little bit of conflict there, and it's been for, forever, on the definition of a third story versus an attic. Um, this has come up in plenty of towns that I've represented, this is an age-old, uh, question and problem. Um, it has to be, uh, pretty much made consistent by each town on how they're gonna address it.
But is it a conflict between the zoning department and the building department?
It's, it's a gray area, it's, 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 it's the best way I can describe.
Chaz and I live in the same world, I think the way most towns have resolved it, if you've got habitable space on a third floor, and you permit two stories in the zone, you need a variance. It's a bulk variance, it's not a used variance. Uh, the building code, they've even cut back on the definition and the description over the years and made it even more, but that's a building code, has nothing to do with zoning, zoning's a different statute, so.
And we're here dealing with the zoning.
You're, you're dealing with the zoning. And there's nothing about one-third, fifty percent, any of that is on, you, you allow in this zone, uh, two-story structures.
We do not allow three-story structures, right?
Correct. Or two and a half, and that could, that confuses things, but it, it, from a zoning standpoint, this is another floor, smaller, another.
So in terms of the building code, there, there's no.
Think of blood.
There's no harm, no foul, but in terms of the zoning code.
They need a bulk variance.
They need a bulk variance. Okay, that's one issue, and then we have, uh, Chaz, we have this whole issue of drainage and roof leaders and everything here, do you wanna, do you wanna?
Right, there was something, um.
That's more my court, yes, I think the division of the engineer.
Right, 'cause you read the, uh, the memo that talks about the not tying into the storm inlet, I imagine, in front of the property.
Yes.
And it's just a very standard, um, it's very, if there's a property that's in question or an application, if there's a storm inlet anywhere near the front of the property, we always, um, ask for the direct tie into that inlet versus just kinda skirting the water off to the street.
Right, um, yeah, I saw that memo, I believe it was from July twenty-first, uh, from, from Justin Liza?
That's correct.
Township engineer, right? So, um, I met on site with, with the contractor and with, uh, Brandon from, uh, from the township engineering division last Thursday, um, to go over this, because we're, uh, topographically, now that we actually have topography on the plan, we're, we're looking at two issues that we're battling, one of which you have a one-to-three percent slope back away from the street, and the other one, we have the hill obviously going down as you travel along the street. Um, facing the house from the street, the left side, there's no way by gravity to get that into the yard drain that's on the uphill side. Um, I spoke with Brandon about this in detail. Um, what we tied into, to discharge into the street, was a pre-existing, uh, roof leader discharge, and the prior roof on, on the previously existing structure was tied into that. Um, on the right side of the property, where the yard drain is located, again, grading issues due to the back pitch away from the street, I can get the front leader into that drain, and that's reflected on newer plan. And you guys have to excuse, please, the changes, like, my plan largely reflects as-built conditions, so every time I've gone back out there, I have to update it with what's already been constructed.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, at, having topography now on the plan, which was never on any of the prior approved plans, that back pitch away from the street is prohibited from getting that right rear roof leader into that, that yard drain. Uh, I have inverts listed and everything, in order to do that, I mean, if you compare the numbers, to have a four-inch PVC pipe coming off that back right corner with even a nominal amount of cover over it, you're actually, your invert there is lower than the fifteen-inch RCP cross-drain coming out of the inlet of the street.
Okay, you just lost me.
Sorry.
It's, basically, the water flows downhill, is what we're trying.
That I understand, that, that's the way, but can you, can you do like a dry well or anything there or not, or it's not?
I think at that point in time, with the limited space, we're not gonna get what I think at that point in time with the limited space, we're not gonna get what your standard spacing should be away from the dwelling. So we're gonna be putting it back into the ground and the sump pump-
Yeah, the sump pump, yeah, I've been there.
Yeah, you're cycling, uh-
Wonderful, wonderful topography of this town and the dirt.
Right.
It's all clay.
Yeah. And it's really, yeah, so it's, the right rear corner, basically, we don't have pitch to get that into the drain. Where I was going with this was, I did see the memo from Mr. Lisa from the twenty-first. I met with Brandon last Thursday, probably a couple days after that memo was issued, went over the topics that I just discussed with him. He brought that back to Mr. Lisa and he left me a voicemail to the effect that your township engineer is okay with the discharge on the left side of the property through the pre-existing leader discharge coming out the curb facing into the street. His comment that he did have was that he wanted the sump pump tied into that drain. Now, that being under pressure-
That's what we were discussing. We didn't know last time we met that the sump pump, we thought on the plans was really tied into the drain, but I was told it was going out to the back.
Right. So, yeah, you can see on the most recent plan now, there was a stone sump basically constructed in the backyard that the sump pump is discharging into. Mr. Lisa thought it would be a better design. I would concur also to get that water out. Because, you know, when you're pumping the sump pump out, even if it spills out onto the yard, it goes back in the ground, it's just cycle. That's fine. They would have to reroute that through the inside of the building and come out the right side as you're facing the street. That, they can make it into the drain, again, be pressure flow, it's no problem.
Right, so that one, that line would tie into the inlet.
Yeah. So the left side of the house, we're basically using a pre-existing connection. The leaders were going out to the street before, they're going out again. I asked Brandon to have Mr. Lisa issue the board a memo in time. I guess it was not received. Obviously, you're taking my testimony. That'll be documented in some kind of memorandum from their department.
Well, you're testifying on the road, so I believe you.
Okay, thank you. I think I, probably even still got it on voicemail, too. I mean, again, pre, post-construction versus pre-construction conditions. If you look at the zoning table, we're talking about a difference of maybe a hundred square feet just under the previous coverage. I believe the flows are very, very close to what they were before any construction took place. That rear right corner, that wood spill out into the yard, it's on the uphill side of the property. It's got complete width of the property to flow out, dispersed, soak into the ground. I don't foresee any problems with-
So you don't need any drainage pertinences in the rear yard?
Nothing. Left side of the house goes out to the curb, right front goes into the yard drain and goes directly to the inlet of the street. And right rear, we have a splash block spill out and dispersed in the yard.
Mr. Chairman, it seems like a reasonable way of handling it. Yes, I would like to have confirmation that the township agrees with that. And it's certainly not the ideal-
We'll make the subject to-
Right. It's not the ideal situation, but it seems like it's practical.
You're okay? You're not okay?
I'm not talking about bringing-
Oh, what are you not talking about? What are you talking about?
Can we, the, the last plan that's submitted on this is dated seven thirteen?
Correct, yep. I have a copy here.
The building coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Do you discount a shed? Where is that shed?
No, I have no shed in the calculations. The numbers are true measure.
What is a hundred percent square foot shed still allowed, not counted as building coverage?
I believe in the, in the code, it states that in excess of the building coverage, you can have a shed up to a hundred square feet. But there is no shed.
Say that again?
There's no exemption.
All right.
You can go get a shed without a building permit.
All right. That was a copy over note from a prior plan. There is no shed anyway, so it's not an issue.
The Joe, and I just, okay, okay. How big is this house?
Dwelling is seventeen hundred and twenty-two square feet.
One floor or all?
Footprint, footprint.
Okay, so how big is that?
You're talking complete floor area?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll refer to the architect on that.
I'll have to see if I have it handy.
How could you not have that handy? I'm sorry, with all due respect, because I got a lot more questions, too.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, 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 please, no, no, no. I just, it's just that through this whole hearing-
Second floor plan, they're all here.
We have the first floor-
They're all here.
Habitable attic.
Habitable attic.
And basement.
It looks like the basement is intended as full occupancy as well.
Could you, could you give me a moment to just flip through and make sure, refer to my name?
Sure.
It's a damn mess.
Seventeen twenty-two.
Then that becomes non-reviewed.
So we have seventeen twenty-two, the first floor, thirteen eighty-seven on the second floor, and fourth floor, four fifty-two as the habitable area in the ad. Okay? So I can just total this up. I'm not including the basement for now. It's, I'll come back and add that if you want me to.
Can you explain it before we try to figure out what it is?
So I'm coming up with forty-one, twenty-two for the first, second, and third floor.
Okay. Forty, I'm sorry, forty-one, twenty-two?
Does that include the basement?
No.
Maybe you could then explain to the board, there's various options in that basement, how that works.
I have to pause it. I left my easel somewhere, but I could hold this up. I have the plans mounted here. We need to refer to them. I can just hold them up.
We have one.
Don't we have an easel?
I'm sorry. You're familiar with it. You should have some of them in-
I have the plans.
We have the plans, here.
You have them, right?
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
The basement is an unfinished space, but it is designed to be finished. We use the superior wall system, which is a metal frame system. Essentially, it's a full basement except for where the garage is, with a permanent stair down in the front and then we also have the outside stairs in the rear. And it's a metal-framed, pre-insulated panel system. I think you're superior. It's a barrier wall system, which is a foundation, a pre-occupied foundation system. It's good for people who might wanna finish a basement in the future. So we have that system and it's, we also have provided rough-in for a future bathroom in the basement. So we have it stuffed out so we wouldn't have to break the slab open. And for laundry also, if they choose to put a laundry down there. Otherwise, it's-
What's behind that that you're pointing to? Almost looks like you have another bathroom there.
Yeah.
Sometimes you'll see something ghosted from above, but we have a bathroom right above and it's just for the plumbers' sake. But no, there's only one bathroom proposed in the basement. And that was there in twenty fourteen when we got the original approval.
Okay. But, but the plan, we see future bathroom rough-in now, okay?
Right.
And then we have future bathroom rough-in for some other areas, right? So-
This one is on the second floor.
Oh, okay, that's what it's saying.
Yeah, the ghosting shouldn't be there, actually, now. Sometimes you'll see, yeah, it helps.
So in theory, there could be inhabitants on four levels of this home?
Yes. We, we, we are thinking that there's nothing wrong with having a full bathroom on every level, but there's-
So the answer's yes to that?
Yes, if you have that, it can be a bathroom on each level, yes.
Yeah, half the bathroom in the basement if you have to take a pee, but I don't see a shower down there being necessary. Absolutely not.
Well, it's something that-
And that's something you might wanna consider if you want an approval.
We could talk to the owners about it and see if they're willing to yield it.
Well-
I think part of the basement purpose is also sort of as a mudroom. The house doesn't really have a mudroom where someone can come in dirty and take off dirty boots and rinse them off and things like that. Maybe even take a shower, like a worker who's been sweating or whatever, doesn't wanna come into his main house until they're-
Do you have lock card, basement?
Hmm?
Is this a lock code?
Yes.
Yes, there's a lock. So they could come in and take a shower and put some dirty clothes someplace and be able to get ready before going upstairs.
No shower in the basement. Any questions by the board at this point?
I do.
Did you want to say something?
What?
Did you want to say something about that, a lot of that topic?
Maygma?
Are she on the road?
She was on the road last night.
Just identify yourself, brother.
I'm Sanalashaw, my daughter. So basically, there's, the only people that would be living there are my parents and me myself. So I, right now, I live with my sister, so that's one of the reasons. But we're okay, and I speak with my parents, for my parents as well, we're okay with not having the bathroom downstairs. That's what it takes.
So you, you say there's only you and your parents living in what's going to be four floors of occupied?
Well, right now, my, probably my sister, too, because she's living in my-
It just sounds like there's, there's the capacity to have a lot of people or a lot of families in this home.
I mean, yeah. So I think we have people traveling from India to Hong Kong and stuff, so it's just extra space, but in no shape or form is it more, more families to live there, which I can testify for that.
You mean, basically, to accommodate the guests, guests?
Do you know how many bedrooms are in this building?
Four?
I couldn't- Four plus the one upstairs.
They call it a four bedroom.
Four bedrooms plus the one upstairs.
Is that counted as attic as a bedroom or the basement?
You don't count the attic as a bedroom?
Attic and basement do not have what we would call bedrooms, but they have been designed-
Okay.
It's set up like that.
Good day.
But it's set up like that.
It looks like a cow.
It's, it's set up like that.
It moves, it's a cow.
Yeah, it's, it's set up like that. You could, you could pretend not to call it anything you don't wanna call it.
But my, my thing to remember is, I know, I know what you're saying. Some people might try to create a bedroom where they shouldn't do it. But in this case, the only way to get to the attic is through the bedrooms, through the front bedrooms of the house. You can't go up there any other way through a public hallway. So it's, it's meant as a bonus room for these two bedrooms, or if they have a close family member that maybe wants to go up that way. But it's, it's not any, any marketable or identifiable bedroom.
But the basement, it's basement.
Yeah.
The basement has its own entry.
You know, I hate to say it, but I've been doing this for thirty-one years and I've never heard more double talk from the applicant than you guys.
Thank you.
Really, I'm sorry. I'm gonna be very blunt, very, very blunt. You got five bedrooms.
That's just what we designed in twenty-
Fine, fine, that's-
No, no, I, I agree with the chairman. I mentioned in the last meeting, the facts fluctuate like crazy on this application. I also have another question, though. Is it true that despite the fact that this house sits at the lower part, the lower grade part of that whole street configuration, that it actually is taller than all of the houses on that road? I just, that's a yes or no question.
I haven't looked at all the, I, I know what you're saying. In Precipity, Lake Precipity, you don't have a lot of houses.
I'm just talking about Adelphia Road, sir. I'm not talking about Lake.
There are, there are tall houses. Right across the street, we have a house that's very tall.
I understand, I know. But yours, the question is, is a yes or no question. I don't need to hear this. Yes or no? This house sits, where it sits, which is the lower grade aspect of that whole road configuration, but does it stand taller than any of the houses and structures on Adelphia Road? Yes or no?
I really haven't measured them all. I would say that you probably could present it from, it would maybe hop tall.
How could you not be familiar with the project that you represent?
Well, I'm familiar with this project. We are under the allowable height for this zone. Way under, we're way under thirty-five feet on the height of the building.
Well, we're still debating whether this is two or three stories.
It's a two and a half story building because the attic, raptors sit on the floor and your definition of half-story is very clear about how, when a half-story is not a half-story. It's, it's written out in the definition and ordinance. And we complied with that from day one in twenty fourteen. We don't wanna create a third floor. We never proposed it. We don't wanna do it now. If you wanna call it a third floor, need to do that for the purpose of the zoning ordinance and where, you know, that's your habit or request and Sophia, it's not gonna change the building. We're not asking to change. But basically, what I, what I wanna reassure you of is that the area is being transformed. I have another project right up the street on Adelphia with a big second floor and a habitable attic proposed and the permits been issued. It's been held off on construction, but you're gonna see more of this type of expansion because people wanna get up higher and see the lake.
That doesn't mean we're approving it.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not saying there's any, you know, any reason to use that as a justification for approval. I'm just saying that it just so happens that you have some one-story houses now that are, have not been developed yet, but it's a very popular area and people are growing families and they want to have more space.
And we are very sympathetic to that in our history of approving expanding homes to take care of elderly parents and extended family. But you're talking about going against the norms that we have applied in that we don't, we don't usually approve three-story homes. And this, when you look at it, looks like a three-story home. It's almost like a four-story home because you have people in the basement. So you, it, it just seems like it's way overdone for my taste.
Well, all I can say to that is, the house is still exactly the way it was approved in twenty fourteen in the sense of the stories and the height. As far as I can tell you, I have the twenty fourteen approval here, if you want me to flip it open. But I did show you the elevation of my ladder last month with the picture of the house next to it. And you could see that it was pretty much just the way it was approved. So we never intended to exceed any norm. We just thought we were doing what was appropriate for the house and the family. And they asked for a full basement that was finishable, which a lot of people want for recreation and for pool tables and different things like that. They had the kids over. And if somebody falls asleep down there, we wanted it to be safe, so we put a degress window in. And that's very normal now. You know, you hear stories about people getting trapped in basements, environment not enabled to get in and rescue. So we do that whenever we possibly can in every basement, even if no one says, you know, wants to sleep down there.
But I'm not sure that's the objection of the board. I'm not sure you'd have a problem if you didn't have the attic being inhabited. I'm not, I can't speak to my colleagues, but I think the bigger-
Wouldn't he not be here? Wouldn't he not be here if this project was really-
Maybe not.
Yeah, constructed the way it was approved back then, you wouldn't be here by now. You wouldn't be here right now.
Well, but the-
It's, it's a project that went awry.
Well, I think that's unfair, sir. With all due respect.
Why are you here?
In twenty fourteen, we noted habitable attic. And we had the permanent stair, we had the windows, we had the roof, just the way we built it pretty much. So we always intended that to be a finished, partially finished attic. And that's how, that's, you know, why we did what we did, because we asked the board for approval and it was approved that way. You know, the original drawings were approved that way. So we didn't come in later and say, let's, let's finish the attic, let's add a story. It's not right to characterize it that way.
So you're not changing the structure of the building out externally, is that correct? You're not changing the exterior, yes?
Right. The outside envelope is very similar to what-
But, but you changed. You added a, you added a door, a full door to go to the basement. That's a change.
Yeah, that was changed.
So you did change.
The zoning office approved that before we did, before we even drew and applied the permits.
And then, you know, I, I, comments here are a little negative. So we understand the family issue. And as Mr. Joshua would say, we are sympathetic to that. The problem here right now, it looks like you were planning to have a four-story structure building with livable, habitable bathrooms and spaces on all four floors. That ain't, that's not what's-
The owner that said this, David?
I have not, the testimony she's giving here-
I think you pulled him in and showered in the basement.
Yes, yes. Honestly, at this point, if I may speak.
You may speak.
At this point, I think we're ready to take away the bathrooms in the attic and the basement. If that's what it takes, even the, like, the toilet part of it.
I don't think we're asking you to take the toilet out.
Okay, so just, yeah, we're okay with that.
I think, I, I, I question the full bathrooms.
Yeah.
Because I think that changes the complexion of the house. Yes, totally. From an additional room for people coming, visiting, and a full-fledged room, okay? That, 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 that's my problem anyways. I don't, I'm not speaking for the rest of the board. I think there's other issues. But, I mean, some of the, some of the information that has been presented about what the original, you know, a habitable third floor and a bedroom up there, and call it whatever you want, it was a bedroom. I think it was entirely different things. And maybe, I'm sorry, I can't see me over my sign.
And how many laundry rooms are there?
I'm sorry?
How many laundry rooms are there?
There's one main laundry room, but we, we left provisions. Sometimes people have like bigger blankets and stuff. They want a big machine. They don't wanna just have to always use the smaller.
But it also could be used for somebody else living there as a separate roof.
We're not gonna-
Some of the stuff, you know, some of the stuff can be added a little ahead of time, too. I mean, you can't, putting some piping in for a laundry, you know, it's a lot easier than putting a bathroom in.
Mm-hmm. So basically, they agree for the basement and attic bathrooms down? No, no bathrooms?
No bathing in the basement.
That's thirty feet.
Yes.
That's fine.
But they can have toilet and lava-
Yes.
That's a half-
That's, I'm, I'm in favor of that part. That's, I'm in favor of that part. That I can...
So, Mr. Chair, the height of this structure, because I was not here on the board in 2014, the height of this structure was approved by the 2014 board considering this application? Who can answer that?
I barely remember. I'm probably the only one that was on the board in 2014. Were you on 2014? Do you remember this application? I don't...
But there was no variance for height, I don't believe.
The height was not the problem.
The height, height never is... I was on the board actually.
You remember this?
I don't remember.
But the testimony is, it's the zoning ordinance, 35 feet.
And the surveyor rechecked all the average grade and all of that. He rechecked during his site visit. And we are still several feet below the maximum.
Well, it says 30 feet. Thirty and a half.
What else? Is there any other testimony? Is there any other questions? Chad, do you have any? We're okay on the drainage. Everybody's happy with that.
It seems like we have...
Subject to the letter.
Right.
We've limited the two showers.
Half bath in the attic.
Half bath in the basement, half bath in the basement and the attic, right? And is there any other issues? Any other issues over here on the right?
No.
On the left? No?
Just the walkout basement is probably the biggest concern.
Is that a Bilco door, or is it just a straight?
It's a straight door with stairs going down. So it's an entranceway. It was originally, I believe, a Bilco door, correct? And then you had some modification by the zoning office, which I don't know how that happened, but it happened.
You know, this, again, this is something that can be retrofitted in half a day. So, you know, I don't, I don't... You know, I just want the applicant to understand that this is not a two-family house, will never be a two-family house, okay? Two-family houses are not permitted in Precipity, in any zone. There's approximately 35 two-family houses, give or take a couple, that predate even when Mr. Chadwick was on board. And that's a long time ago.
If I can interrupt, you know, just before there's all sorts of talk about what the zoning officer did or did not do, no one walks into the zoning office and the zoning, talks to the zoning officer, and she just agrees without documentation. If she agreed to something, she would have edited her zoning permit. How this all came up about the attic is the construction department brought the plans down when they saw the habitable attic. Those were not the same plans that the zoning officer saw.
Originally approved?
That's correct. So that's how this came up. Construction caught it. It was brought down. It was never part of the original permit. It was, that's where it came from. And I just hear, like, some bashing of the zoning officer. So you need, you need to, like, keep an open mind here.
Yeah. I don't know who bashed the zoning officer, I don't remember hearing that.
It also says on the memo that they are concerned about the safety of the occupants in, on the third story. We didn't even address that issue.
They didn't say why, though? Because there's no egress.
Now they got the egress.
Which is something we addressed in our last meeting.
Let me just respond a little bit to that. For what Nora just said is, is just to clarify, what the building department noticed, which triggered that question with zoning, was the addition of the bathroom on the third floor, on the attic level. That's what made him say, wow, what's going on here, right, Nora?
It was the habitable space, everything in these plans. They were not there. That was not what was presented to the zoning department when the application originally came up.
Nora, that wasn't part of the original application that approval was?
No, no, it was not.
So there was no approval for habitable space in the attic or the basement?
No.
I disagree with that because the drawings I have do show habitable attic. They show the permanent stair. They show the windows and everything, just the way we built it.
But I, but again, what the board secretary stated was there was an issue with plans presented in 2014 that got approval, and then the plans that were submitted to afterwards to zoning, or to our construction.
People triggered it, though, because I just want to make clear that back at the end of 2019, we finished the drawings for the initial permit. We submitted them to zoning because we always submit three sets to zoning first before they go to the building department for permits. They review them. They say, okay, go ahead to the building department. Because that means, to us, we took that to mean, okay, you're fine, you're in compliance, you agree with what we approved in zoning, you know, the variances in the resolution. So we apply for permits. Now, those drawings had the full habitable attic in them. That was not added during construction or afterthought. It was part of the original approved set of plans, which I have most of that here.
I don't mean to interrupt, but after approval by resolution, the zoning officer does not look at the plans again. Her permit is based off what was submitted, what she did her review on for the board and the resolution. She does not review the plans again. So if you changed it and you're saying that you brought three sets to zoning, that you didn't. She didn't look at them. She does not look at plans again after approval by resolution.
Just as I'm very, as honestly as I possibly can, if there was no...
I've worked in the zoning department for 10 years before working for the boards.
I understand.
I was part, I was in zoning when this application came to zoning.
You don't blame me.
Okay?
I understand what you're saying, that they may not have opened every sheet, compared every sheet to the 2014.
They don't look at plans at all after approval by resolution.
Okay. So, but what I'm trying to say, and want to reassure the board so they're not confused or misunderstanding anything, is the 2014 approval that I have here, I can show you again, I showed you in the letter of last month the close-ups of where those notes were. And we did talk about the attic being partially finished. We had, we had the big windows in the front and the sides. And we had the permanent stair going up. It wasn't just an unfinished attic. It was, you know, a usable attic. And it was noted that way on the, on the citation that was signed and approved by the board.
But there's a big difference between a usable space, where you send the kids up to play, where you put a ping-pong table or a pool table versus a full-fledged basement, a bedroom. Call it whatever you want. You were putting a full-fledged bedroom up there. Now, the fact that it couldn't be accessed directly from the, from the public area, it was... So I think, again, you're dealing with definitions, and I think you're double talking, okay? Now, can we move on with this case? We all understand what's going on. Nora has explained her position with regard to the zoning officer, okay? And I understand her. I understand where you're coming from. Is there any other questions right now? Is there any member of the public that has any questions of these witnesses on the testimony given? Questions on these two witnesses? Any questions? I hear none and seen none.
I just have a quick question about the application.
Yes.
Our original application that the owners filled out was for two variances. And then what happened was, after about a month, maybe after that, is when Jennifer wrote her letter, which she's referring to, on which she mentioned the third floor question. Okay. So that variance for the so-called third floor was not included in the application originally. But I understand, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that you want to add that as a variance, as a bulk variance tonight? But the other option is to just agree that it's not a third floor, that it's a half-story, and that it was... I'll tie it according to 2014.
Did you hear what I said a half hour ago?
Paul, just ask me, I'm just...
You didn't hear, did you?
I meant the application to add that variance.
There's a building code and there's a zoning ordinance. We're the zoning board, we're not the building code. It would just make life a lot easier if we just give you the freaking variance, please. Pardon my...
I just want to say before you vote, there are three variances now, right? There's three variances.
And we will... We can usually notice, but what other, I mean, any others that, any others?
Nora, do you know whether notice included any and all of the variances?
I assume it's... Probably not.
Whatever Jan, what, the notice, unless they changed it.
It used to have it, I know that.
Unless they changed it, the notice.
What about if you guys remove the whole bedroom in the attic?
Stays the sections that...
Leave it open area.
But it stays under the sections.
What, can you just explain a little? Do you want it to, like, not have the bathroom and then open it more or close it off?
Half bath only and open area.
Our question right now is, if you need a third variance, did you notice? Did you notice? You okay?
That is the notice. That's the notice. This was the original, I'm sorry. Yeah, it's the original, we heard.
You're okay.
Any other variances?
Yeah, it's there. Any another, so you, any other variances that are requested are in the, are in the notice. So you've noticed people that there might be other variances required. Very simple, okay? All right. Any other testimony? No. Any members of, I'm going to ask this again, just to clarify. Any, any members of the public have any questions of these witnesses on the testimony? I hear none and seen none. There's nothing else you'd like to add? Now, I will give you an opportunity. If there's anybody who wants to speak in objection, that you can come back and tell us. And there's some, so I'm going to ask right now, is there any members of the public who wish to speak in opposition to this application? In support of this application? I hear none and seen none. Do we need to go into conference?
Probably.
Okay. Motion to go into conference? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Who wants to start?
I will. This applicant lacks my complete confidence. I am, you know, we are setting ourselves up for a multi-family house here, even with all the agreements that are outlined. The fact that we're here now and based on some of the expert testimony by this applicant that kept contradicting itself left and right in previous hearings and, and tonight, I have no confidence that any of the deals that will be formed tonight will be respected. Hence, why we're here today, as outlined in previous testimony. So I'll be voting against it. And in addition to that, I wasn't here in 2014. That structure is humongous. It does, is not in coherence with the neighborhood. It's massive in scale, even, even in comparison to the newer construction along this street. Again, I'll be voting against it.
Mr. Wilkins?
I understand all the fascinations and everything we discussed. I, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned with any bathroom in the attic. I'd be more comfortable if there was no bathroom in the attic. But she's like, I think the access to it is through the bedrooms. So I haven't heard any testimony to me that would support the need for going up there. If that were the case, then I would, the fact that it's a half bath in the basement, I would consider it the attic half-story. I think I would be in favor of it under the circumstances.
She wants the elimination of the half bath and the upstairs?
That would make me...
Can you live with that or not?
Live with it.
If they wanted to keep it, could you live with that?
I would be against it.
Probably against it.
Okay.
Mr. Willens?
Yeah, we are here for the Board of Adjustment on zoning issues, right?
Right.
A lot of the other things we've been talking about are construction issues. And you're here because it appears from your plans that this was going to become a multifamily dwelling. You now are testifying that you will be willing to remove the bathrooms from the basement and the attic, is that correct?
Yes.
And that these are not in a habitable, and I think the term before was accessible versus habitable or whatever, okay? So the upstairs attic space, okay? Right now, you want family members to be able to go up there and if you have extended family staying with you for a period of time, maybe have a place to lay down and sleep or rest up there, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, okay. And that would be the same case for the basement?
Not necessarily stay. I mean, probably put a infant or something like that. But you don't want anybody to live inside the basement. That's why I'm agreeing to taking out the bathroom as well, if that be...
Okay, all right. So if you're, in your testimony, I'm relying on more than anything else here, by the way, okay?
I promise.
For your family, okay? Your promise is one thing, testimony is another, okay? All right? But for the house itself, you're not altering the structure of the house externally. So you're going to make it more habitable for your family needs internally by some of these changes, okay? And if you remove the possibility of that becoming a multifamily dwelling by taking out those bathrooms, I would probably support this application.
But just for the record, they're, they're not, testimony so far is that they're not taking out the bathrooms on the, in the attic or the basement. They said that they would take out the showers so you could still have a half...
A half bath, yes, I'm sorry, half bath, yes.
You would be willing to keep the half bath in the basement?
Yes.
What about the half bath?
Yeah, I think that'd be okay.
Okay, Mr. Ready?
Yeah, same thing here. To accommodate the family needs, it is a one-family with four bedrooms. That's what I believe. Basement completely, no full bath, only half bath. And going to the attic, only half bath, and it should be like a plain area, no rooms or anything, like a livable, just like kids playing or chit-chat, or somebody can talk, and not a livable place. So, and the third one is, if the height of the building is in compliance with the code of permitted code. So if all these things are in compliance, I'm in favor of this.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Jaskiewicz?
I agree with Ms. Schneider. I'm against it. I think it's been very confusing and hasn't been put forward smoothly and straightforward. I think for, the attic is done already. So to undo it doesn't make sense to me. I don't think that's happening. And I'm uncomfortable. We never addressed the safety issue, which is the one letter we had. That was never addressed. So I'm totally uncomfortable, and I'm voting against it.
Okay. First of all, I would like to say that to the applicant that I'm sorry that we've gotten to this point quite a bit of discussion and maybe some controversy and misunderstanding between the building code and the, and zoning, et cetera, et cetera. If you're willing to take out the showers on the top floor and in the basement, I understand Ms. Schneider's comments, but it... I think if the applicant came here and testified under oath that they will not do certain things, it's a little different than people who just do things on their own accord and put basements. And we've had them where they've put full kitchens and full apartments and basements. And, you know, they, they come and ask forgiveness, not, you know, not for permission. And I think these people are really asking for permission. So I would be willing, I would be voting in favor as long as we can resolve the drainage issues, which Mr. Holloway says we can. We have the height issue addressed. Not an issue, okay? The variances would be the...
The French porch, you have the French porch variance, which we discussed, but it shows where it is. And the deck in the back, which was, I thought that was in the original plans. And of course, the bathroom issue.
Okay. So, and I think we need, I think we're going to need confirmation from the town engineer of the drainage agreement, okay?
Right now, you have three and three.
And that's a win? Ties a win?
Ties a loss. They don't have it.
Well, I thought she said she was wanting to remove the bathroom in the attic totally.
Yeah.
You need to remove the bathroom from upstairs to get approval. Cause you're, you have three, three right now and that's a loss.
So no half bath?
That's fine.
Fine, okay. So you're amending your application, are you amending everything to eliminate the bathroom upstairs and the shower downstairs?
Yes. It's okay to have the half bath downstairs or should we remove that? Is it okay to have the half bath in the basement?
Yes, yes, that we're all in agreement with, yes. Okay, motion to come out of conference?
Some. Some. Secondary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, um, I would recommend that we authorize the attorney to draw up a resolution. What we're gonna do, in order so that you're represented by counsel tonight, okay? So, what I wanna explain to you is that Mr. King is gonna draw up a resolution which encompasses all the aspects that we spoke about tonight, okay? And you will have an opportunity to look at that resolution. Now, I'm not saying you need to engage counsel to review it, you probably don't need to. You might have your professionals just look at it to make sure everybody's on the same wavelength. Okay, so I'm asking someone to frame a resolution, to authorize Mr. King to, to, to draw up a resolution that encompasses the, 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 all the things that we spoke about. Eliminating the half bath, the bathroom upstairs, eliminating the shower in the basement, and I believe everything else is approved. Subject to the.
Engineer.
Engineer's letter and, and, and all the drainage issues being addressed. Do I have a motion to that effect?
I, I am with a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Nora, call the roll.
Berkowitz?
Yes.
Jaskiewicz?
No.
Ready?
Yes.
Snyder?
No.
Willens?
Yes.
Ibercain?
Yes. Okay. Alright.
Thank you so much.
It was like having root canal on Ibercain, right?
It's like three, three cheeks.
Oh, dear.
Thank you.
You leaving?
Yes.
Yeah. Can I? I'm not making a motion to.
Mr. Chairman, I have to recuse myself from the next case.
I made the motion to remove.
Thank you.
You're lucky.
Come on up, Mr. O'Neil. Does anybody have to take a break?
You're lucky.
Okay.
Are we okay with this?
Say what?
We're down to five?
We're gonna be down to five, that's correct.
Well, she went to the bathroom.
She went to the bathroom, she'll be right back.
What the hell are you doing? Those people.
Huh?
Those people over here.
Those are people that, yeah, those are a couple we agreed to give them more.
Judge, do you wanna put on the record book?
It was discussed about that.
Issue you can't.
Daryl's. You want to?
Yeah.
Okay.
What's going on now? Go ahead, Mr. King. Who's having lunch with? Sitting here at a booze with three foot big manager.
Are we ready?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Joseph O'Neil of Garifalo O'Neil Orgirio here on behalf of the applicant. This is a bifurcated application. Use variance approval and all the variances actually were granted in the prior approval. This is the site plan testimony. Uh, with me, I have, uh, Mr. McClellan to my immediate right, who we'll introduce in a moment. But I believe Mr. King and I need to discuss.
Yes.
I recognize him with his mask on.
I don't recognize him with my pants on. It's been a long time since I've had a meeting like this.
So, the, the issue that we wanna bring before the board, the town, specifically the town attorney has sent a letter to us with regard to the, um, set aside. The town went into or had an agreement based upon the litigation that going forward would be twenty percent. The issue is, is the decision, the date of that decision, how it affects this application. When this application was filed and the approvals were granted, that, that agreement was not executed, to my knowledge. I don't think it was. And I believe, um, you're of the opinion it was not.
I could fill in some dates here. We were, we were declared, uh, complete. In, uh, just give me a minute, I'm sorry. August fifteenth, twenty nineteen, we were declared complete. The settlement was beginning to work its way through the courts at that point. The township adopted enabling ordinances memorializing the settlement that became effective October first of twenty nineteen. We had already begun the application and had had at least one hearing, perhaps two at that point. Our position is that this is an issue that was covered by the use variance itself for the units. Affordable housing units are elements of use, they're not elements of bulk. So when we got the approval for the use variance, uh, we got the right to build the units in the configuration that you see here before you tonight. That's supported by the Homes of Hope case, which we cited in the original, uh, hearing that provided, that providing affordable units over what's required would actually be considered inherently beneficial use.
In any event, it was fifteen percent, the agreement was for twenty. There's, there's, the, the old rule is, it's, I guess, time of the essence, more or less, or the, the the time that those ordinances were in effect. If you predate it, you're not subject to them. If it's after, you are subject to them. The argument is, is that, um, this application was not subject to the twenty percent and it was agreed upon fifteen percent. I think there was some discussion about that. Uh, the only nuance in it is, is that this involves a, a settlement with, um, the state. It's not as clear as it was, just an ordinance change. But, but again, I think that zoning board has taken out of that, it's more of an issue, if it becomes an issue, between the township and the applicant.
Yeah, the settlement was with.
What are we talking about, the number of units? How many units is twenty and fifty, what was it?
Five percent, five, what's five percent of your total units?
What's the double tell?
Four. Ten units?
Seven hundred and fifty-six, yes. Oh, it'd be fifteen, seven, seven.
Seven, we're talking about seven units?
Right.
Number one.
Right.
Number two. If this gets litigated, it's gonna get litigated by the town, not by us.
That's correct.
I have no indication that the town's gonna do anything like that.
And, and we approved it already and that's, no.
Well, the time that, the, the, the time that it rolled through, was filed, uh, was predated the settlement.
So you think we're, we're okay with our.
That has always been the longstanding.
Anybody have any problems with that? Mr. Berkowitz, you have any problems with that?
No.
Good.
The key, the key to this is, the plan was deemed complete.
Okay.
That's where you fix your ordinance. And they were well ahead of the settlement.
Okay, so it's a done deal.
Again, the only nuance would be with this court settlement, it's a little bit different. But again, that's not a litigation that is our concern. And all our resolutions do say that you'd have to follow whatever is deemed appropriate by the, um, municipal.
You have to remember, at the time this thing was filed, there was no requirement for affordable. And if the board recalls, Mr. O'Neil and I had a discussion about how much you were gonna have set aside, how much you want.
Okay.
And he agreed that the goal standard was fifteen percent and they would live with it.
Would that be part of our board purview anyway?
At that time, if we weren't involved in that litigation, so we had, we had no knowledge. So again, that would be us, that would be the town and the applicant.
We discussed it, I don't, the twenty percent number wasn't really public. I don't remember if I knew about the twenty percent number in, uh, when we did the first hearing. That really just came about as part of the settlement with Fair Share Housing.
This has no bearing on our va, our, our job at this point, does it?
No, it doesn't, but you did receive the letter, we did.
Fine.
I just wanted to bring it up to the board.
Thank you. And it's been brought up and let's proceed. We got too, we got too many things.
There's one other item.
Okay.
It's really, if you grant this preliminary and final site plan, you should make a condition to a, either a statement of exemption from the Highlands Act, because the town did join in December twentieth, two thousand twenty, which was after our approval, but before preliminary site plan approval. So I don't know what Highlands Council will do. If they say, no, you gotta come to us, well, they'll have to go there. If they say you're exempt, you're exempt.
No problem.
The town has no regulations whatsoever.
Yeah.
Adopted or, as I understand, even in the working stage for.
Oh, I don't know about that. I have, there are no adopted regulations that I could find on.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Noted. Go ahead.
So with all that, Mr. McClellan will discuss the site plan. I'll have it sworn again.
Mr. Raise your right hand, you swore a firm testimony, you're about to give it to the boards yourself, you got?
I did.
And for the record, you're the engineer?
Yes.
All your licenses are at full force and effect, you've provided testimony for this board or other boards in the state of Jersey.
I have, yes.
Right, Mr. Chairman, you're qualified as an expert.
So, Mr. McClellan, referring to the plan that you filed, I wonder if you could just walk us through what it is. We're proposing, I will point out to the board, we did extensive testimony about the site plan, about truck turning radiuses, about all that, in the original application, even though we did not apply for a site plan. So, this is gonna be a lot shorter than that. Mr. McClellan?
Good evening. Um, if I seem out of practice, again, I apologize, this is my first live meeting, eight, nine months.
Wow. More than a year.
Got so used to doing it on, on the computer, so. Uh, anyway, as counsel has said, you've seen this application before for use variance. We, we're calling this Powder Mill Plaza West. It's located at block eighteen, lot eight, on Route, uh, Route ten west. Uh, the property is currently fully developed with a series of commercial retail spaces. And the plan is to redevelop the property to remove the existing building and.
Has stated.
Uh, the plan that we're looking at is, is revised six, three, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you.
Uh, this is the set that was submitted and I haven't made any changes, just on a board, so I have something to point to. Referring to sheet three, uh, the proposal again is to remove the existing building. Uh, and we're gonna be constructing, uh, a building with one hundred and fifty-six residential units. This is the same building that we had before this board for the use variance. So, uh, essentially, it's the same application. Uh, there, there's really only one minor adjustment to the zone schedule. Everything is the same from the previous application, uh, except that we have a very slight reduction in the impervious cover proposed. Uh, we had had, uh, in the use variance application, we had sixty-four point one percent on the approved plan. And this one has a slight reduction to sixty-three point nine percent. All the rest of the bulk requirements are the same, uh, from the existing app, from the previous application. Uh, we're proposing again, a single building, uh, three stories with fifty-two units per floor. Uh, and, and we have, uh, at the back of the building, we have parking underneath the building. We're taking advantage of the fact that the property slopes down.
It's two buildings.
It's one building. It's connected, it's.
But that's fully open, right?
Yeah, well, yeah, it's.
Two building with connecting courtyard.
It's, well, it has a connecting garage underneath.
Yeah, okay.
So. Yeah. So, um, anyway, so it's, it is fifty-two units per floor, uh, with ninety-one parking spaces underneath and a total of four hundred and seven spaces throughout the site. I think probably the easiest way to, to do this, Mr. O'Neil, is to go through, uh, the letter.
Sure. The July ninth, two, twenty twenty-one letter?
Yes.
Mr. Holloway?
And I did have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Holloway, uh, earlier today. Uh, we have reviewed this letter in detail. Uh, and generally as a whole, we have no objections or issues with the comments.
And you'll comply with?
We will comply with them. There are a few that were asked for some testimony. So I am gonna talk about twelve or thirteen of them specifically, if I may. Alright, so, uh, starting on page two of Mr. Holloway's letter, number two. Uh, testimony should be provided, uh, for the status of the existing and proposed variances and waivers. Uh, again, just for the board's identification, we, we're listing, uh, use variance, building height, building stories, lot coverage, building coverage, wall height, and steep slope disturbances. All of those variances were part of the original use variance application and we've repeated those, those, uh, items here. And again, the, uh, all of the bulk requirements, all of the variance, all the deficiencies that we were asking permission for the last time and approved are the same, except for building coverage, which has actually been reduced by two tenths of a percent. Not a heck of a lot, but it's in the right direction at least. So, uh, so we have not changed or exacerbated any of the variances that were previously approved. Uh, item three, uh, council had discussed the affordable housing, so I'll, I think that's, uh, provided a sufficient testimony to respond to the comment. Uh, moving to item six, applicant should provide testimony regarding permits needed. This application, should it be approved, will require a DOT access permit, because we are on Route ten. We are proposing to remove the two existing access points that are there today. And we're proposing one new access point down the center of the site to, to improve the circulation on and off of the property. Uh, we'll also need a, a sewer extension application, Treatment Works approval. We'll require a water main extension application. Both of those are a result of the number of residential units that we're proposing. Uh, so we, we require permits for those numbers. And then finally, we'll need Morris County Soil Conservation District. And I don't believe we'll need Morris County, but typically we file just to at least get an exemption letter.
Did you have allocation for the water?
They, we can't get allocation until we file an approved plan. So, you know, we'll, we'll be filing that. Again, the board should act favorably, we'll file that. And, and, you know, I, I understand that that, there's some issues there, but we certainly will, you know, we'll go through that process.
So this, this application would be subject to that allocation?
Yes, it would. Uh, item A, plan should, should be, uh, should include a detail of what's planned in the open recreational area. Uh, and, you know, again, the, the plans don't specifically outline what's there, but for the record, uh, we're, we're proposing it to be a passive recreation area. It's gonna consist of, you know, outdoor gathering, using tables and chairs. It's not intended to be a children's play area or intended to be, you know, anything that would be a noisy, uh, outdoor activity. Uh, item, item nine, I just wanna confirm to the board that projects, uh, isolated on Route ten, consideration of a, of a five-foot curb and sidewalk walking path around the perimeter of the building should be considered. And we think that's a good idea. Uh, so we just wanted to put on the record that we will, uh, we will add that to the plan. Currently, there's about, there's sidewalk about two-thirds of the way around the building. Uh, but we'll continue it around the back and it'll give, uh, circul, pedestrian circulation around the whole building to all the access points and also could be a source of exercise for somebody who chooses to use that, for that purpose. Item ten, applicant should provide testimony regarding the building inclusion of pets. Uh, and if the tenant is available, um, to the buffer area located along the northerly property line. The policy of, of the applicant is not to allow pets. Um, they will have to recognize service animals if, if someone should have that need. Uh, but the policy will be no pets, so there, there won't be a provision for pet walking or things of that nature.
No access to the.
No access to the back, yeah. Item thirteen, applicant should provide testimony regarding electrical vehicle charging stations and bike racks. Regarding charging stations, it actually is, uh, in the future plans of the applicant to provide charging stations. It's an oncoming and emerging technology. It's something that's becoming important in residential projects. There is not a specific plan today of how to do that, uh, but it is something that they are, uh, willing to do in the future. If the board wanted to, say, set aside, say, six parking spaces for the purposes of, uh, future, uh, electric charging, the applicant will be willing to do that. Uh, regarding the bike racks, though, uh, we did not consider bike racks here. Unfortunately, the project being located on Route ten, it doesn't seem, you know, too, uh, too much of a good idea to promote the bicycle riding, uh, so we have not provided bicycle racks. Number fourteen, applicant should provide testimony regarding loading areas and box truck delivery areas. Uh, we currently do not have a loading area specified on the plan, but that's also a growing concern with Uber and and all of the delivery services that are now out there. Uh, we've discussed with the applicant, the idea of putting perhaps, uh, a, a loading area, actually. We've discussed with the applicant the idea of putting perhaps a loading area actually right in front of the building. Actually, we have a rather large concrete plaza area that we could carve out a loading area for that purpose, so we would be willing to accept that as a condition should the application be approved.
Have you thought about having some place that they would drop the packages in the building as opposed to leaving them by doors?
I think I would have to defer that question. I have not had that conversation, but perhaps...
I just saw an application elsewhere, and it seemed to make a lot of sense, especially if you have 156 units.
Yeah.
There's a good chance some packages getting dropped off, and, of course, they're not going to be inside somebody's front door. They're going to be in the hallway.
I will defer that. Thank you. Just a couple more. Number 18, applicant should testify regarding site identification signage. The current plan, there's two existing monument-type signs out in frontage, both of which will be removed. There'll be one new sign proposed. It's not been designed yet, but it will be located in the Boulevard Island at the center of the accessway. That's actually very close to the more westerly sign that's there now, and it is very effective. There's good sightline to that one. The applicant proposes, you know, a fully conforming sign, and once it's designed, they'll apply for the appropriate zoning permits, and it will be complying with the zoning ordinance. But there has not been a design yet for that. Number 21, applicant should testify regarding vehicular and pedestrian access to the adjoining Lot 19. There exists, Lot 19 is one lot to our west, and there's currently a driveway from the back of our property to that property next door. We had originally thought to close that off because we're having some topographic concerns there, but we've since rethought it. The plan still shows it closed off, but the applicant would like to maintain that driveway, so we would have a small reconfiguration of this area here that would open it back up. It would cost us two parking spaces to do it, so we would be reduced now to 405 spaces, but we're far in excess of the requirement. So the board has no objection to that. We'd like to reverse that back to leaving it open on a, as a condition of approval.
Is that partly for fire truck access as well as safety?
It's for fire truck access. It's actually also to assist cross-access for the getting out to Route 10. You know, our traffic engineer tells us, you know, anytime you can encourage cross-traffic on the properties, it's less vehicle movements out on the roadway. And then applicant should testify regarding an auxiliary generator to advise the board that there is not a plan for an auxiliary generator, so we don't have one shown on the plan. Flipping ahead to Page 5, under Utilities, just to confirm, Item 2 under Utilities, this building will be fully sprinklered, required by code, and will, of course, be complied Item 6, applicant should provide testimony regarding the proposed water connection points. What we can show you is, and I'm referring to Sheet 2 of our plan, which is our existing conditions, you know, there's currently water and sewer service to this site because it's fully developed. Our homework is telling us that there's a water line that exists coming down the east side of the property, around the back, and then on to the adjacent property, and then there's a second water line that tees off of that line and then also goes off onto Lot 19. Our proposal is actually to continue to maintain that connection and to create one more leg of the loop between these two, these two tees. You still have to do flow testing. We still need an NEP to design all of the pipe sizes and such, but there is water supply...
You're still going to be connected to Lot 19?
Yeah, we're not, we do not plan to disconnect that now.
All right. Do they have another connection somewhere? I just wouldn't feel more comfortable if I knew there was loops somehow. I don't know.
We will have to do some research and share that with you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll confirm that it's not a dead end, not a...
Yeah, it could be a couple less of that kind of thing.
I understand that comment. And then the entire section for stowward management, you know, this is a site that has a stowward management design on it. The proposal actually decreases the impervious cover by about a half an acre, so by rule, we're satisfying the stowward management regulations. However, Mr. Holloway has a bunch of comments that are actually applicable and good comments, and we will comply with them all. And then finally, under the section of traffic and parking, Item 3, just to confirm, or I guess to discuss with the board, we recognize that we're far in excess of the required parking. Just to correct, we have on our plan that we need 307 parking spaces. We actually need 289. We had a mathematical blunder in our spreadsheet. So we actually need 289. We're proposing 407. We'll lose, you know, a couple of spaces because of the interconnection, so even if I said we're down to 400 with that, we're far in excess of what's required. Now, we're doing that because we're on Route 10. We don't have opportunity for off-site parking. However, if, you know, the board has discussed in the past the idea of maybe reducing the amount of parking, maybe reverting some of the spaces back to green, and the applicant does not object to that strategy. The board would like to see that.
The options are to bank the parking spaces.
Yeah.
Short, from a conceptual standpoint.
Right.
So that would be for consideration when we're looking at.
Okay, so we could...
We have no opportunity for street parking, and what if you have an excessive number of visitors? I don't know. Would you ever have more than 100 visitors at one time? I don't know that stuff.
You know, that's, you know, we could always lean on the residential site improvement standards because they tell us that guest parking is considered, but they clearly don't talk about Mother's Day or Thanksgiving or Super Bowl Sunday. I'll be honest with this board, this is probably the most successive parking I've seen in a project. It's done so, it's convenient because we have it, we can do it. And as Mr. Holloway said, though, I know at the variance hearing, we talked about the idea of banking the parking. So where we can designate a certain number of spaces that will not be, you know, that would reserve for parking if there becomes a need, but we can revert them to green space, and, you know, if five years down the road, there's a problem with the parking, they can take 20 of the bank and pay them. So, you know, we're remenable to that idea, and if the board, you know, sees fit, we certainly will work with you on that. And again, all the other comments in the letter, we have no issue complying with.
There's going to be a five-foot sidewalk around me there.
Yeah, that one I specifically want brought on the record because I think that's an excellent idea. So what I want to specifically say to the board that we're going to be providing.
Can you please just show us where the doors are that might be parked for the architect?
Well, we, I don't have the doors clearly shown on my plan, and that's part of the coordination we have to do, because I don't show doors on the west edge, and I don't show sidewalk here, and I think that's what prompted your...
I see, good.
Yeah, and, you know, good catch, because, one, we have almost 40 feet of a drive-by over here, so we have opportunity for sidewalk to hit all the doors. You also have opportunity for a little green strip in there that we'd like to do. So, okay, we welcome an opportunity to show you, you know, without taking up the board's time, I think we can do a good job complying with those comments.
Mr. McClellan, there's a major soil moving permit associated with this application also. Could you testify to that?
There is. Actually, I forgot, yeah. Oh, here we go. Thank you, Mr. Leesa. Yeah, we had done the, you know, this project is largely, you know, to grade anyway, but we are going to create a better experience out there because right now, the slopes when you're coming off of Route 10 are really steep. So we are going to fill soil in the front of the property, and the building's designed to have parking under a story lower at the back, so the building kind of becomes a wall, and we're putting soil in the front. So as a result, we have an import of soil coming to this site. We've estimated it to be 5,071 cubic feet. We've prepared plans to show that number, and the engineering department has reviewed it and has, according to their letter dated April 23rd, they have no objections to issuing the soil moving, to the soil moving application.
5,071 cubic feet? There's nine cubic feet?
Cubic yards, I'm sorry.
Cubic yards, okay.
Yeah.
So we're talking about 450 trucks, 460 trucks?
Sounds good.
Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't know what I'm doing. 507,1 divided by 20, 2, like 225 trucks or something.
Yeah, and over the life of this project, you know, that's, and...
And it's only coming on 10. There's no...
Yeah, I was going to say, if it's timed right, it would come, you know, it would be local spoils from other projects by this client, so it would actually, you know, it would help benefit because it would get a local destination if there was any soils coming off of some of the other projects nearby.
I'd like to talk about the generator and the fire suppression system. I think you're going to need power to operate a fire suppression system, won't you?
You think it'll need a pump system?
I think...
Yeah. Well, again, a little early in the process for a design to have been done, but certainly pressure flow testing for the water system is going to be needed.
Those generators, let's do it this way. If you do need a generator or choose to have a generator to keep juice there when the power goes out, that it will not be on the outside of the building to, no, the outsides and rear of the building, meaning...
The interior.
To the residential side, period.
Yeah.
Because you have to exercise those things, I don't know, once a week or something like that.
Yeah.
They're annoying.
We have, yeah, because the residential at the back, we certainly could stay away from that. We have some opportunity over here if we may.
He's going to the garage.
So, yeah, so, yeah, we can, if needed, we can comply with that.
Will any transport be part?
Maybe nice. Nice, nice.
Well, again, that's what we're talking about, an alternate source of power should, you know, should be needed, and if, you know...
Okay, it's a good spot.
Candidly, just as long as it can be vented, I think that it could be done. So, you know, if it's possible to put in the garage, and the things we have to...
All I'm suggesting to the board is that it's not located on the residential side of this property.
Yeah, that's not a problem. We comply with that.
I have no further questions for this one. Any more questions to this witness? Mr. Holloway, you're okay? Mr. Chabwick, you're okay? It looks like everybody else is okay. Next witness. Oh, any members of the public? Have any questions of this witness on a testimony given this evening? Any questions by members of... Please come forward.
Ma'am, do you have a question?
Mr. O'Neill, is it going to be other witnesses? Mr. McDonough is going to be on lights. I have other witnesses for questions.
Lighting, landscaping, you're not going to run into that quick?
She has a question, actually.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Oh, she's, okay, she's working her way up. Hi.
Just for the record, can you state your name?
Barbara Marzloff.
You've got to come closer to the microphone, please.
Barbara Marzloff.
How do you spell that, ma'am? M-A?
M-A-R-Z-L-O-F-F, two F's, second Frank.
Thank you.
Barbara, just before you got up, there's one more witness, Mr. McDonough, who is going to explain landscaping and lighting, and I don't know if your questions are going to go to that. Maybe we want to hear him first or not. It's up to you.
Yeah, we can hear her.
Okay.
Mr. McDonough. Any other members of the public have any questions of this witness, and it looks like I see none. Thank you. Don't go too far. Thank you, Mr. McClellan.
Mr. McDonough, you've been sworn, you've not been sworn yet, correct?
Not for this application.
Raise your hand. You swear firm testimony you're about to give before the boards choose who you got?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, all your licenses are in full force and effect?
Yes, that's correct. I'm testifying in the capacity of both a planner and a landscape architect.
Okay. And you've been qualified before this board and other boards in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I have.
As an expert. Mr. Chairman, the witness has been qualified as an expert.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, you are familiar with the application before the board this evening?
Yes, I am.
You've had an opportunity to examine local ordinances and master plan?
Yes, I have.
And I wonder if you could go ahead and compare that, this application, to those documents, right after you do your landscaping testimony?
Sure thing. So we were involved with the use variance plan as well in the application, which we know was vetted extensively through multiple hearings with the board. In connection with that application, we put forth a report that is actually about two years old now, almost to the day, where we addressed the site plan aspects. We addressed both the C and the D relief that the applicant was considering, and they were actually folded into the D relief that the applicant was granted for use. In that regard, we've put together a landscape plan on top of the site plan that Pat McClellan has put together. I'm happy to report that the site plan is in substantial conformance with the use variance plan, and in effect, the use variance plan has held up through the scrutiny of site planning detail as we work our way through the grading and the drainage, and here I put together a landscape and lighting plan on top of Mr. McClellan's plan. You've heard the detail, I'll say, of the nuts and bolts of the plan in terms of the infrastructure, the circulation, the access, the parking, the building positioning. The overall key numbers of this application remain substantially consistent with that which was approved under the use variance plan. The density is exactly the same. The overall layout is substantially similar to that which the board reviewed under site plan as well. Building mass hasn't changed, floor area and the like. The planting plan that we put together focuses on three main parts here. The back part, the buffer, which is up against the residential area, both preserves the mature and dense woodland that presently is in place there now. There's no change to what we presented as part of the use variance application. The plan also to supplement that with additional plantings upwards of 150 are also exactly the same as that to which we testified, too. We did talk about site-specific locations during construction with sensitivity and care to our neighboring properties behind us in the back. Second part of the landscape package includes extensive plantings in the interior of the parking lot. We've provided trees and shrubs throughout. Mr. McClellan has given us a good base to work with, that this is not going to be an expansive asphalt, but actually something that is well-broken up. You know, the site presently is stepped in its current condition, and what Mr. McClellan's plan does here is does create a nice flat plain, which is much more conducive to a residential living environment. That makes it easier for us to break up the parking lot with a planting plan that can actually have lower plantings than what we see out there presently now, and much greater variety than we see on the property presently. And then finally, the last part of the landscape plan emphasizes the building itself, helping, I'll say, the hard lines of the building blend with the natural landscape, and we've put a foundation planting all around the perimeter of the building as well. We've gone with a wide variety of plant selections here with an emphasis on native plantings, on drought-tolerant plantings, deer-resistant plantings, and plantings that would overall be low maintenance. We've also put together a lighting plan that will safely illuminate the site in the interior, meeting what are typical site planning standards in terms of the interior, also, again, with consideration and sensitivity to our neighbors on the perimeter of the property. We have houseside shields such that there will be no spillage of light onto those adjacent properties, and also, we've designed a plan that as well, I'll say, is dark sky compliant to the extent that this is not going to create what we might call a stadium effect or a skyglow effect where those lights will reverberate to the sky. So directional pointed lights, these are new LED lights, have higher energy efficiencies than those older shoeboxes that are out there now. Care and consideration given to our surrounding neighborhood with those cutoffs both at the edge and in the... our surrounding neighborhood, uh, with those cutoffs both at the edge and in the sky as well. Uh, in that regard, the plan, the landscaping and the lighting does conform to the ordinances here in town, and no design exceptions or relief is sought in that regard. To affirm the relief that the board previously granted here, this site is in a transitional zone, it happens to be called the office transitional zone, the board has already found that residential multifamily is an appropriate transitional use here, from non-residential to the lower density residential that's on the downhill side of the site, and all of the relief that was previously granted has not changed whatsoever, the building height, the number of stories, the building coverage, the lot coverage also holds what was set forth before, but only better, as you heard through Mr. McClellan's testimony, there's a slight downtick in the overall coverage from previously sixty-four point one percent to now sixty-three point nine percent, so that's a, a betterment over that which the board has already vetted. The applicant is seeking relief for the wall height, which are going to be the string of walls that run along the Route Ten side, but they are going to plunge downward from Route Ten, so they're not going to stand out as adjuvant structures on Route Ten, and they're only going to be six feet high, uh, I think the board knows well that your ordinances here in town have a four-foot height limit for walls and fences in the front yard, but again, these are not going to be perceivable, they help to effectuate that, I'll say, grade catch-up in that flatter plain on the downhill side. Likewise, relief for steep slopes, there are aspects of the property now, particularly around the perimeter and in the interior where we have that, that tiering taking place, that does trigger relief for steep slopes, but these are all man-made slopes, these are previously disturbed slopes, and the applicant are not disturbing raw or, or natural slopes that, uh, have not already been disturbed. All said, this is just to reaffirm the relief that the board has already granted, that all of the project positives carry forth, this plan is going to continue to promote the public good with new housing stock and of cour-, of course, that added element of affordable housing as well, the site plans now demonstrate that the project will promote a positive aesthetic and efficient use of land, all of this continues to promote the purposes of the land use law, especially Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare, Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations, Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, and Purpose M, again, the efficient use of land. On the negative side, any impacts associated with this development will be minimal, to the extent cer-, that certainly the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh the detriments, and in that regard, I believe the statutory criteria for relief are met, and approval on the site plan, plan level is warranted here. Just a couple of things to plug in in terms of questions from the board, I think there was a good question about the package room, this plan, uh, just to echo what was told, uh, through Mr. Holloway's, uh, question, this is one building with two wings, a left and a right wing, or an east and a west wing is what it's called on the plan, each has a lobby with a package room off of it, and the applicant will stipulate that lockers in there for package drop-off and, and the like, so that is covered in the, in the floor plans and contemplated by the, the architecture of, of the building. I think I addressed everything you wanted me to hit, was there any, anything else? What's that? Oh, oh, yes, and the generator is not needed here, uh, the fire suppression system is adequate, told through, uh, the applicant's experience, that a generator will not be needed here for the fire suppression system.
Okay.
Could you explain the access to the passive recreation area, I'm just trying to, I see a little landscaping there, and I'm trying to, say I'm on a sidewalk and I wanna go through the passive recreation area.
Sure, so, it, it, I don't have the architectural plans here, but there, the open space area is going to be the lower tier, bear in mind, both of these L's, these wings rise up from there, and you can't see it here, but it's a centrally loaded or double-loaded corridor that actually loops back to the front of the building, and there'll be a door that punches out.
Is there a, is there a sidewalk connection between that and the, uh?
The, the, uh, parking, the rooftop terrace of the parking structure, I believe, is elevated relative to the grade, I don't think it's flush, it is flush?
Yes, you're, you're.
Ah, okay.
Parking in the back.
So I do have sidewalks in our, in our landscape plan, I have to go back and check if they follow Pat's base plan as well, but, Chaz, if the question is to connect this sidewalk to that center courtyard?
Or even just the main sidewalk that's going all the way around to get back there.
We can punch an access point through there, I see no reason why not. So you can get to that center court from both the inside and the outside.
I have no further questions.
Did we address the fire inspector's report in any way, did I miss that?
The real answer to that is, is a lot of specifications, you don't really have any choice.
I think the, the short answer is we'll comply, but I don't know if any issues are raised.
We're gonna let Mr. McDonald.
We'll comply. And there's verbiage here I've never heard of before, like corporation stops, meter yoke, but you said you're, you're conformant, right?
The, the, the county has standards for those.
Okay.
Counties have standards, so.
And they said something about no fire lanes and associated signs indicated on plan?
Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll set those up, and then we'll submit, we'll submit it to them for their, for their, uh, review and acceptance.
I think you mentioned the sprinkler system, right?
We did.
Fire alarm, which will be, does, in fire, okay, well, that's good.
And, and at the use variance application, we did talk in detail about the fire truck access.
Okay.
And the fire department did confirm that that was acceptable.
Okay, we talked about the, the soil moving, Dan Casse's, uh, memo, I have no idea what he's saying here, he's got total units and then market and COA, he's got nothing, does that make any difference, or?
It's not changing from the original.
Fine, okay.
We'll get that information.
Okay, that's that, huh?
That's complete.
Yeah?
I think so.
Mr. O'Neil, have you made any contact to the Highlands Commission at all?
Uh, no, we've not had an opportunity to do that. Uh, I was, uh, more concerned with trying to see if any standards have been adopted locally, while they've accepted Highland standards, they don't appear to have done any of the enabling ordinances, so I don't know. I'll, if there's a requirement.
It's kind of a multi-stage process to become a quote, member of the Highlands, uh, grouping, and they did the first step saying, we will join you, as far as I can determine.
Yeah, I, my impression was always you do that step and the enabling ordinances at the same time, but obviously, hey, I'm mistaken, so we'll comply with every recommendation.
Any questions of, um, Mr. McDonough? Um, actually, I have, I have one, I think, there was some discussion about the possibility of banking some parking spaces to create more recreational or green, green area, do you have a recommendation on something like that, since you're familiar with the landscaping?
Well, if we look at the, the pure math, I think we calculated that to eliminate the coverage relief altogether would be about ninety spaces, I think that's, we have a surplus of about a hundred or so spaces, I don't know that we wanna go that extreme, maybe there's a, maybe there's a happy medium somewhere, um, but, again, this, the reason why there's so much parking here is because this site has so much parking already, we're working within the, the constraints of the site that, the way it's already been developed, we have an applicant that's, that's willing to make the site more green, so, I don't know, Mr. Berkowitz, if the question is where, where do you bank?
Yeah, because I have no idea what, what could be done, but I'm guessing.
Could be any place out front there.
I'll leave it to the board, but of course, I would think that if you're going to bank, it's those spaces furthest away, those on the, on the base of the wall, those are the least convenient of the spaces.
And the thing is, this is basically a one-bedroom project.
Yes, I, I don't remember.
I forget what the percentage of one-bedrooms are, is that?
Hundred and twenty.
Hundred and twenty.
Thanks, Pat.
So, you know, the, the one-bedroom is what, one-eighth, is that what it is?
Yes.
I mean, you've got such a multiple with that, I mean, that, that's almost saying you're gonna have two occupants and each has their own car.
With four hundred spaces.
Yeah, way over, yes, so I, I would agree with John, uh, leave the, leave those spaces out furthest away, gives you a place to pile snow, you know, all those fun things.
We'll agree to that, the last row being converted into a bank spaces.
Well, are you gonna provide some temporarily green area for it, or what can we do?
It's just gonna be, uh, unlined pavement.
Bocce courts in.
There you go.
We will, uh, we will put green space in there.
Okay. Horseshoes and bocce, right?
That's all I have.
Not, actually, actually, the thing that everybody wants now is pickleball, a couple of pickleball courts in there, that'd be nice, everybody, oh God, this is the latest, down by me in Ware Town, they're going crazy, they just built two courts.
Nice, because they're compact.
Yeah, and they're tolerable for us seventy-year-olds.
Run as much.
You play a little wiffle ball, or something like that.
I have no further questions for Mr. McDonough.
Any other questions of Mr. McDonough, any members of the public have any questions of either Mr. McDonough or Mr. McClellan on the testimony given this evening, if you have questions, please come forward, please come forward. Just please restate your name.
Barbara Marzloff, of course, being right behind this big, high monstrosity, my concern is privacy and noise, that's my main two concerns, I wanna know, like, how many windows are gonna be facing me, I'm concerned about people in windows looking right down, because we sit way down here, the building is gonna be way up here, and then there's no privacy, like, if you wanna go in the pool, swimming pool, all these windows are gonna be looking right down, and if they're saying that it's all filled with trees back there, that is not totally the case, there are some trees on part of the property, but the other half of the property is all open, and we had to have a great big tree taken down because of carpenter ants, which opened up another space, so maybe one half of it is all.
Excuse me, excuse me, your question is, you wanna know about the vegetation and the privacy?
And the windows and stuff.
And the number of windows that's gonna be provided to the rear of the property which faces the rear of your property. So let's go with an answer now, guys.
Okay, uh, that was discussed at great length at the use variance hearing, at that time, uh, we had presented an exhibit that showed a cross-section through, uh, the houses below, the, uh, existing vegetation, the back of the applicant's property, and up to the building, and we had shown a line of sight, and we had shown how the application was going to infill with some mature vegetation to supplement what's there, so, uh, and what was about a hundred and fifty trees?
Yes.
Yeah, about a hundred and fifty trees, you know, as a result of that approval, which are superimposed on the plan, so they're part of this approval, and then also to infill areas after you, we do all that, and then infill areas that may still be void, so that would, that would address, you know, the loss of that tree, um, that, that you've had, so that would get filled in.
And I believe you also agreed, the applicant agreed that it would replace any trees that died, you were gonna maintain that area.
Yeah, there would be a, there would be a warranty for the landscape, yep.
Well, unfortunately, with COVID, there were some meetings that were online, and it went in, uh, it wasn't Zoom, it was like, I don't know, WECO or something I wasn't familiar with, and I could see all you guys in.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, when was this application approved?
It was, it was here, yeah.
I don't think this mood meeting, this.
Two thousand nineteen, it was.
This was two thousand.
An early two thousand twenty.
This, this meeting was never online.
We never had a weather.
Never, we never had this, this meeting online, I remember, I remember you being here, and I think it was, um, Mr. Snyder and I agreeing with you that we wanted to look at the, the, um, landscaping, um, they came back, you were here, nothing has changed since that last meeting, now with regard to the windows on the back of the.
I have a number.
Okay, you have a number.
Before, before, John, the, the, the use variance condition basically says that the town has two bites of the apple, they've got the landscaping plan up there, we think it's, meets what the discussion was, but even after that, if there's obviously open holes that were uncovered, they have the responsibility to fill them in, so, you know, it's kinda like, we don't get it right the first time, we're gonna get it right the second time.
But you're not proposing anything different than what we proposed two years ago, I mean, what we agreed to two years ago.
That's correct, the, the exhibit that Mr. McDonough is showing, that's literally the same plan that we had before, you know, when we had that cross-section drawing that showed what it would look like, uh, from a resident looking up at the building.
And the building is in the same position?
Same position.
Same height?
Same height, same facade.
As we, as we agreed with regard to the landscaping.
Correct.
So the landscaping was decided two years ago, okay?
I was not aware of it, I only got the letter, like, uh, back in maybe, I don't remember, the end of twenty, somewhere, somewhere in the end of twenty, I didn't know anything two years ago of anything that was going on, we don't, we were not notified, only when we got.
You were here.
You were here for it, for the proceedings.
You were, I remember you being here for the meetings, and you were the reason that we carried the case for one more meeting.
I was here for one meeting, and then after that, COVID came and it was online.
I'm sorry, I have to disagree with you.
Yeah.
Nora, do you have proof that these meetings were held before, um, or am I wrong?
Um, because I remember online, when I was on the WebEx thing, she was saying, I think somebody, Mrs. Marzloff, was trying to get through, and I couldn't figure out how to do it.
You didn't have a meeting online? You did have a meeting online.
COVID started up, the first meeting to get canceled for the COVID outbreak was this meeting.
Was this meeting?
Prior application, so I believe we did do one meeting online.
Well, I mean, we, we agreed to the, to the landscaping plan at some point, and it was quite a while ago, more than a year ago.
We provided, uh, a cross-section showing, line of sight to the building, we provided photo simulations of the building superimposed into the backyards.
Were you on that meeting?
We did that a couple of times, because the board was not satisfied with the first set of photo simulations, so we had to do it again.
Were you, were you on that meeting, did you have an opportunity to see that presentation or not?
I, I was here one time in person before it went to the web thing, and they said something about they were gonna put little plannings in here, it would take twenty years before you would have any privacy.
And that, that was all changed at the next meeting, and right, right, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, because I was the one who requested for the maturation.
We agreed at that point that they, they were providing us, so, unfortunately, unless there is a significant issue, the landscaping part is kinda sealed in wax.
Okay, then, I would like to understand, the wall that is at the end of the property there, goes up, goes down like about ten feet, so this is, say, where the fence thing is, that space down there is like ten feet, and then, um, there's the fence.
Do you, do you, do you under, do you understand what she's?
You have to, because Mr. Kaplan brought that up during that.
Can you, can you, um, explain that?
Mr. Chairman, if I can take it?
Yes, go ahead.
And I'll also say, I'm under oath, I've only been questioned in person on the landscaping, I was never questioned virtually, I, and.
All right, then I made a mistake.
Yeah, I think so too. I think so too, I don't ever remember landscaping.
And I remember.
I remember sitting here and approving that application, in this seat.
Mr. Kaplan also, in regards to the wall issue that she brings up, Mr. Kaplan was very vocal about that.
I thought the approval was, was February twenty twenty, which would have been a month before COVID.
Right.
That sounds very, yeah.
That's second to be precise.
That, there, I, now, I remember, because we had a question about the landscaping that you brought up, they came back with a, and I don't remember whether you were here or not. brought up. They came back with a, and I don't remember whether you were here or not. And Ms. Snyder and I, who had issues with the first time, and I remember sitting here and looking at her as we both agreed that the plan was changing.
And Mr. Kaplan too, I think.
And Mr. Kaplan too, yeah.
He was worried about small trees and how long it would take to grow.
But also the wall that she's speaking of, he was concerned about that.
Can you explain, I don't remember the wall. Tell me about the wall.
If you remember the site, the back of the building now is a service court. That's where all the loading takes place. You have dumpsters back there. There is a drop-off from the site to the woodland. It's a little bit deeper than this dais here. But if you're on the shopping center side, it's eight feet, 10 feet.
It goes from like six to eight down to, I think, your testimony was two or three.
Yeah, my recollection was like two or three feet at this end. It was about eight feet down this end, and it just sort of tapered as you went across.
But it is a drop-off. It is a drop-off from the site to your home. So.
At the highest part of the wall, so I'm dropped down more than a mow to the bottom.
Right.
So you have more blockage by the wall. You have more, 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 what's the word?
Yeah. Well, my recollection was, and to this person's point, that, and we talked about this, the concern is that if the planting surface is eight feet lower than the wall, it has to be more substantial.
Right.
And that was, that was the gist of the last exhibit. We showed, I remember showing the line of sight and how tall the trees had to be to fully block the building. My recollection was, it's the trees had to, maturely had to be 40 to 60 feet. So, you know, we couldn't plant 24-inch shrubs and expect that to do any good.
We also solved the problem by planting the trees on our property closer than our property.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
That's exactly right. That's where I was going to go. We specifically on our plan showed a roll of evergreens with sensitivity to where that house was, on the closest point to the home. So the blockage is not only the trees behind, but the trees right on your property line as well.
And you increase the height of those trees.
Yes, we did.
Yeah.
We're filling the voids. 150, a pool of 150 plants are committed by this applicant to augment that, where the gaps are now.
Cost to infill.
It would have to be 40 feet high before it was doing good.
Well, we did angles, we did line of sight angles to show that the plants that are proposed will block the visibility of those.
Unless they can maybe make some kind of a firm there and then plant, so they would be, I.
Again, the commitment is there, the pool of plants are, the commitment is there. Again, with the site-specific condition that this will be evaluated in the field as to the optimum locations.
And the town's arborer also reviewed the plan and approved it.
Yes, the forester.
He gets final sign-offs.
And just to answer the question, approximately 40 windows on each wing. But bear in mind, it's an office transitional zone. I'm in the buildings over at Gibraltar Drive. It's a whole ribbon, three levels of ribbons of windows that wrap around. So windows are contemplated there under the zone plan.
Yeah, well, then there's no privacy there.
But there could be office windows there.
A complete ribbon of windows. It's only 40.
You're getting, you're. There's much less windows. Residential application is much less intense than what could potentially be there in terms of commercial development. That's what you have to understand. Yeah, there's going to be windows there, but there could potentially be a lot more windows with a different, different use.
Well, the building that's there right now, there's hardly any windows.
Can I ask a question? When you bought your house, was there a commercial development there?
The building was there, but it's mostly cement. There's hardly any windows.
Was the building there when you, you bought a piece of property that bordered on a commercial piece of property, correct?
Yes.
You didn't, your house wasn't built.
You can hardly tell it's there at the time.
Excuse me?
You can hardly tell it's there at the time because there's hardly any windows, and it just blends in. But this is going to be totally different building and much higher.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I'd much rather have residential behind me than a commercial building because a commercial building attracts potential rodents, trucks back and forth. You're getting the better of the, and I'm not trying to testify for the applicant, but I'm just, I'm trying to get you, hopefully, to understand, unless these guys want to do it.
Well, that's the, that goes towards the use argument as well. One of the nice things about this application is taking that service area away. It's taking the dumpsters away. It's taking the loading areas. I'm sure there's some sound and some noise back there.
And all those apartments, there's still going to be noise and people.
There's not going to be a service area back there. Yeah, there will be the sound of human voices, yes.
Any other members of the public have any questions? Please, witnesses.
Testimony given?
I hear none. Seen none.
I have two other witnesses if the board has any questions. Mr. Kiddermore, our architect, and Mr. Steiger, our traffic expert. We brought them out just in case anyone had any questions. Their testimony really is needed here because we're talking about the site plan.
So the traffic, all the traffic issues that we discussed at the last meeting haven't changed?
Not at all.
Our town is still as busy as it was. Is that correct? Correct, Mr. Steiger?
No.
Unless there are any other questions, that concludes our direct presentation.
Let's just, no significant changes from the architectural side?
No changes at all.
Anybody have any problems with us not hearing our testimony? Any additional testimony? You know, we only have five people.
This is a site plan.
I'm just, okay. You're done?
That's, that ends our direct, isn't it?
And considering that couple just left, I don't think there's going to be any objectors. Any members of the public who are speaking objections to this application, in support of this application? I hear none, seen none. Do we need to go into conference, or are we happy with the?
Not near to.
Maybe, because we don't do a lot of site plans. Although, we do them with the variances, but do them by themselves. Is there any we need to be concerned about that we haven't already put going up?
Mr., I want to defer Mr. Chad with.
I thought you meant the Holloway.
I would just act on it and authorize Pete and myself to develop the conditions. We know what they are, pretty much.
They, they.
If you don't think it's there, you know, read the resolution and add some, if you have to. Okay, do I have a volunteer to frame a resolution?
I'm sorry.
Frame a resolution authorizing the attorney to.
And professionals.
And professionals.
I make the motion to. I make the motion to make a resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? You know, I almost called you, Harriet. Nora, Nora, please call.
Oh, my God.
You know what it is? I see Mr. McDonough, I see Mr. Steiger, I see Mr. McClellan. I'm living five years ago, you know? What can I say?
What can you say, Harriet?
You don't want to know what she was going to say.
You've got to leave, leave fast.
I get a kick out of when Mr. King asks Mr. McDonough if he's been qualified before this board. I think the only person that's been at more meetings in the last 30 years, besides me, has been Mr. Mc.
Yes.
Josko, no, Ready.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Willen.
Yes.
Arricane.
Yes. Okay, the result is the motion passes for a resolution to be drawn up for the site plan.
And it won't be ready in two weeks.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice.
I guess I can leave all these papers. You know, it would be great if we could get electronic monitors. Do you realize how many? Motion to adjourn?
No, I would.
On paper?
I think every board member, because it works hard enough, you need to get it on.
I want a, I want a 24-inch screen so that I can see the plans right here.
A lot of boards require it.
You could do it. You make a one-time.
A lot of that have smart.
You make a one.